... School Committee, January 22nd, 2015, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to begin with just saying that the meeting is being recorded, and if you can silence any cellphones, that would be great. This is a good problem to have, but we have a tremendous amount of people being recognized tonight and not enough seats. So, I thank you for your patience, and I know some of you are standing right now, so I apologize, but if anyone is able to give up a seat to somebody and willing to do though, that would be great. We'll begin with public comment for any agenda items.
Hi, Jean Willoughby, Raleigh Tevin Lane. I would just like to ask if there's a line item for assisted technology in the new budget for next year, and if there is, what does it include, like the devices, applications, and training?
What was it that you said?
Assistive.
Assisted technology.
Assistive, okay. We will look at that and see if we can answer that in the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. I don't know where she went, but Dr. Scuzer, there she is, hiding in the back. There's a free seat, so...
Thank you very much, as always, for allowing us the opportunity to recognize a number of our outstanding students at the high school. Tonight, I have a number of our musicians and our DECA students who finished their competition recently at the districts, and these are all of the students who have qualified for the state competition, which will be in March. So, I'm going to recognize the music students who participated in the Northeastern District Festival, and I will also acknowledge in this group, ten of them have been asked to be participants in the All-State Music Festival, which will be March 21st at Symphony Hall in Boston. So, the first student is a junior, Griffin Barber. He is in this for tenor saxophone. Band, is Griffin here? All right. Kunal Galla, grade 10, snare drum.
That's our drum roll.
Yunji Koo, violin, grade 12. Oh, we're 0-for-3 here.
Must be band practice or something.
Eric Close, tenor saxophone, grade 12. Yay!
Congratulations, Eric. Nice job.
Sarab Kumar, grade 11, clarinet.
Thank you.
Nice job. Congratulations.
Sam Lahren, grade 12, tenor saxophone. Sydney Seo, clarinet, grade 11. No Sydney. Frank Zhu, 10th grade, alto saxophone.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice work.
Jessica Carroll, who is a 12th grader in our chorus and alto, member of the chorus. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
William Ferguson, tenor in the chorus, 9th grader.
Freshman? No, he's not here.
Daniel Holman, a tenor in the chorus, 11th grader. Hannah Johnston, a soprano, senior in our chorus.
Congratulations.
Maria Kuchilis Moriarty, an alto in the chorus, 10th grader. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Nice job.
Natalie Mazina, an alto in the chorus, grade 12. Erin Murphy, alto, grade 10. And Terry Hurst, grade 11, snare drum. Wow, value. Congratulations. So, Griffin Barber, Kunal Galla, Eric Close, Sarab Kumar, Sam Lahren, Frank Zhu, Jessica Carroll, Hannah Johnston, Maria Kuchilis Moriarty, and Natalie Mazina, all are going to be participating in the All-State Festival in March, so congratulations to them for that. All right. Now, we have our placers from the districts for DECA, and this is our highest number ever. We have 73 students who placed and have qualified for participation in the states, and we have a couple of categories where we swept the category, so I'm pretty impressed with us. I hope you are. The first group is First Place Finish in Public Relations Project, Olivia Robinson and Alyssa Lash. Either of them? Are they out the hall, maybe? Nope, okay. First place for entrepreneurship, participating, and creating a franchising business is Cecilia DeSalvo. Cecilia, yes?
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Entrepreneurship, participating, creating an independent business, we have second place, Chris Bosco. Is Chris here? And third place, Miriam Sam. Ugh, not here. Hospitality and Tourism Operations, we have first and second place, and these were teams of three. So, first place is Rebecca Riedel, Emma Billicki, sorry if I pronounce that poorly, and Richie Testa.
Thank you. Yes. A little lighter.
Uh-oh.
Congratulations.
Second place in hospitality and tourism operations, Rebecca Bonds, Stephanie Stabile, and Brianna Scolli. Nope, all right. Fourth place, Marketing Communications, the team of Alex Casal and Madeline, Maddie Shea. Maddie might be a gymnastic. Nope, I don't see Alex either. Sports Entertainment and Marketing, first, we went 1, 2, and 3 here. First place is the team of Paul Wostrowma and Ben Naftal. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're up second place. You're just in first order.
All right, second's coming up.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It might be easier if I just go in order. Let's do that. That's easier.
These second?
Those are all gone.
Oh, these are gone. All right. Let's do this. Whoa.
And then this one hasn't been called either.
Oh, okay. All right, let me see what we have here.
Good effort, Doug.
I tried. You tried.
All right. Third place for Sports Entertainment Marketing is Alex Romano. Is Alex here? He's probably at basketball practice. Second place Travel and Tourism, Shannon McElroy. Second place for Sports and Entertainment Marketing, Louis Belagato, Belasugato? There he is. Yay! Congratulations.
Congratulations. Nice job.
Third place Sports and Entertainment Marketing, Zachary Wolfgang. That's Alex's partner. They were a team. And, no, I thought it might be. Second place Travel and Tourism, Douglas Starrett. Is Doug here? Third place Travel and Tourism, Zach Martino. He's probably at hockey. Third place Travel and Tourism, John McKay. He's probably at hockey. Fourth place Travel and Tourism, Rebecca Hardy.
Maybe.
Maybe. There is a girls' team, there could be. Fourth place Travel and Tourism, Danielle McGuire. Yay! Yay, Danielle. Congratulations. First place Sports and Entertainment Marketing, Ben Naftal. There we go. We found him. And his paws. And Paul Wostrowma. Once again, there you go. All right, we found them.
There you are.
Second place Sports Entertainment Marketing, Ryan Basset. Congratulations, Eric. Third place Finance Operations, Thomas Kuchen. No, Thomas. Nope. First place Travel and Tourism, Nick Sorasso. First place Travel and Tourism, Jacob Burkhardt. No Jake.
No Jake.
Third place Entrepreneurship Innovation Plan, Devon Spatelli. Nope. Third place Entrepreneurship Innovation Plan, Julia Morandi. Nope, we are not. You'd never know they were all handed something in writing, would you, a week ago? Entrepreneurship Innovation Plan, first place, Mark Tucker. Mark here. No Mark. First place Entrepreneurship Innovation Plan, Martin Conrad.
They were the team?
They are a team. Second place Advertising Campaign, Sophia Kichin? Kichin. Thank you, sorry. I'll get it right by the time you're graduating.
Congratulations.
Second place Advertising Campaign, Natalie Mazina. Is she here?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Third place Financial Services, Ariana Limonius. Nope, Ariana. And this is her partner, third place Financial Services, Yorushi Madani. Nope. Second place Financial Services, John Kelly. No John. Second place Financial Services, and I believe Mr. Kelly's partner, Ryan Goode. Nope. Fourth place Fashion Merchandising Project, Emily Centrella. First place Creative Marketing Project, Alexis Kaminsky? Kaminyansky?
Kamineski.
Kamineski. Thank you. Congratulations. First place Creative Marketing Project, Zachary Bontempo. I'll give you this time. No, not yet. Congratulations. Second place Business Finance, Nicholas Deduka. Third place Sports and Entertainment Marketing, Nicholas Holling. He's out the door. Third place Finance Operations, Jacqueline Petto. First place Human Resource Management, Megan Quint. Yay! Congratulations, Megan.
Congratulations.
Second place Principles of Business Management, Megan Robinson. First place Principles of Business Management, Madison Lisbina. Second place Buying and Merchandising Operations Research, Lindsay West. Second place Buying and Merchandising Operations Research, Carolyn Roach. Nope. Second place Buying and Merchandising Operations Research, Yanni Falaris. Fourth place Learn and Earn Project, Madeline Koschev. Second place Financial Literacy Promotion Project, Alisa Dixon. Second place Financial Literacy Promotion Project, Kylie Piotti. First place Personal Finance Literacy, Kelly Rogers. No Kelly. Third place Principles of Finance, Anna Chase. First place Principles of Hospitality and Tourism, Jonathan Cooperstein. First place Sports and Entertainment Promotion Plan, Brett Kuchansky. No Brett. First place Sports and Entertainment Promotion Plan, Brian Rivet. Is he here? Brian! Oh, you don't play. Second place Entrepreneurship Promotion Project, Nicole Donato. Second place Entrepreneurship Promotion Project, Sarah Gudrow. Second place Entrepreneurship Promotion Project, Sabrina Frelick. No Sabrina. First place Automotive Service Marketing, Neil Shabin. Fourth place Business Service Marketing, Riley Cronin. First place Entrepreneurship, and this was a written project, Christina Palazola. First place Entrepreneurship Written Project, Jeffrey Hardy. First place Entrepreneurship Written Project, Steven Saroff. Congratulations. Third place Restaurant and Food Service Management, Lucia Gabriello. First place Principles of Marketing, Vasil Vigatos. First place Retail Merchandising, Kyra Brown. First place Marketing Management, Joe Gudenberger. Congratulations, Joe. Second place Business Services Operations, Alyssa Dalton. Second place Business Services Operations, Rachel Damian. Last one. See who the winner is. Second place Business Services Operations, Molly Dalton. Yay! Congratulations. Thank you very much. I'm sure they won't be offended if you all sneak out.
Just very quickly, I just want to say congratulations to all the students. Absolutely fantastic job, and very proud, and I actually, over the years, it's been really exciting to see the number of certificates every meeting just grow and get thicker and thicker. I felt like your parents will appreciate it, but I felt like I was signing a mortgage with as many pages as I was going through. You guys don't get what I'm saying, but you will someday. But congratulations, and I think Mr. Gilligan wants to try to get a picture of the students outside if we...
Didn't sleep.
Yes, yes, so, thank you.
Congratulations.
Nice job, Brian. That was good.
That was tough.
I think actually, yes, I think that works.
I keep telling you, congratulations.
Oh, okay. Okay. Worst case, you can always get...
I guess so.
Congratulations.
How are you?
Nick, you're not taking this personally, are you?
No.
How you doing?
Nice job.
Not tonight.
All right, we will, uh, we'll jump into the student report.
We come late.
Nick?
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, I will be reiterating some of the stuff I talked about a couple weeks ago at our last meeting, kind of all over the place tonight. There will be a gymnastics competition starting tomorrow at Andover High School going to Sunday. I know that is a big competition coming up, and there's also a robotics competition at the high school on Sunday. We'll start off with sports first, and then we'll get into the fundraising stuff. Yeah, so, boys' basketball lost to Andover, it was a really tough game. A lot of high school kids showed support at Andover Gym, but it was a tough loss. My hockey team actually beat Andover a couple days after that, 5-2, which was a big win. We're getting back on track with our record, so, uh, we're gonna try and make it to the tournament.
Even the score a little bit?
Yeah, even the score a little bit. It was a good feeling, actually. A couple of basketball guys were talking a little trash to us for not having the best record, but we beat Andover, so it was good. The, both track teams, both boys and girls, won states. I think I talked about that a little bit last week also, and at school the other day, we actually had a march. All the track people and the coaches walked down Main Street, and everyone lined up along Main Street of the high school, and everyone clapped for them. We did the same thing last year with the wrestling team. For girls' basketball, they beat Stonem yesterday, and there will be a fundraiser going on. My statistics teacher, Mrs. Flanagan, she runs National Honor Society, she's the leader of it, and I heard a rumor because she was talking to me and the head of our student section, Andrew Severin, about a fundraiser coming up. I don't really know much details about it, all I know is she's trying to get everyone to wear pink or yellow. It's for cancer and all the benefits from the game will go towards that. I know there was a girl with brain cancer, one of our past athletes at the high school. I don't have much information about that, so I'm sorry, but that was just the rumor. The girls' hockey team are also doing very good. They lost to Andover unfortunately, too, but they will be doing a breast cancer night called Pink in the Rink. There is a Haverhill teacher that they are supporting because it is the HPNA hockey team. The girls' hockey team, it's Havel, Penntucket, North Andover, all mixed together. So, it's a retired Haverhill teacher, Lynn Lynch, she is, she beat breast cancer and is currently battling mesotheliemia right now, and all the benefits will be going to NASH General Cancer Research, so that was another good fundraiser that I heard about. Oh, and the girls' basketball fundraiser that I should have brought up first, it will actually be going on tomorrow. There is a booster, booster fundraiser, it's North Andover Booster Fundraiser, so anyone in the booster program for North Andover will be able to meet with the varsity girls after the game, get their autographs, take pictures, so it's a fun way to get them with the sport, and there will also be a halftime knockout competition, and if you wear your jersey, you're getting free, so... And, I mean, I think that's all of it.
Halftime knockout?
Halftime knockout, so knockout's a game, a bunch of kids actually made up, I don't know how many years ago. It's just a fun game, like, there's a line of people, you shoot it, the person behind you shoots it in before you get it, and you get knocked out. So, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah. And, other than that, school's going great, there's no problems. That I've heard of. Yeah? Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks again, Nick.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good night.
So, we're now gonna move on to the consent agenda and the, we have approval of minutes from January 8th and January 15th meetings.
Mr. Chair, move to approve as presented in the packet, the minutes of January 8th and January 15th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
No, looks good.
Anything on any of these?
Nope.
All right, all in favor of approving the consent, or the, I'm sorry, the minutes as presented in the packet, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? No, any abstentions or noes? Any noes? No. Okay, five to nothing. All right, we will move down to the chair's report. I feel like it's been not enough time since our last meeting, which is be the cycle that we're on for the next couple of days. So, my, I don't really have a report other than I'm glad to see Dr. Hutchison back and feeling better, and I know, Ms. Limpert, you attended the CREST meeting and wanted to give the committee an update on that.
Yes, thanks. The CREST Board of Directors, once a month, we had our monthly meeting on Wednesday. Just two quick, two quick things I wanted to post you on. They just released their annual report, nice-looking document. I'm gonna try to get copies for all of you, because it has good explanations of all the programs in here. It's kind of really more of an educational document than really an annual report. I think it's, they've done a really nice job here, and I think it'll be good for everyone to be able to look and see what, what the benefits are of belonging to this collaborative and what they can do for us. So, that's really a good thing. The other thing, just to let you all know, is they're still in the process of trying to finalize their rates for the next fiscal year, which they haven't done and should be doing shortly. Typically speaking, rates have been going up about 2% per fiscal year, so we would expect our rates from them to be going up by that now. We'll have to ask Mr. Mealy what it's 2% of. What do you, what do we pay to the collaborative?
It's based on each student, but 2% is annually what we...
But what, currently are we, are we, how many students do we have in the collaborative currently?
I'd have to look. Yeah, and Leanne might know.
I mean, kind of depends on, price depends on what program they're in as well, whether they require care professional and other...
Yep.
Is there, is there any...
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sure they won't be offended if you all sneak out.
Just very quickly, I just want to say congratulations to all the students. Absolutely fantastic job and very proud. And I actually, over the years, it's been really exciting to see the number of certificates every meeting just grow and get thicker and thicker. I felt like your parents will appreciate it, but I felt like I was signing a mortgage with as many pages as I was going through. You guys don't get what I'm saying, but you will someday. But congratulations, and I think Mr. Gilligan wants to try to get a picture of the students outside if we...
Didn't sleep.
Yes, yes, so, thank you. Oh, okay. Worst case, you can always get up. Nick, you're not taking this personally, are you?
Nice job.
Not tonight. Not tonight. We'll jump into the student report. Nick?
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I will be reiterating some of the stuff I talked about a couple of weeks ago at our last meeting. Kind of all over the place tonight. There will be a gymnastics competition starting tomorrow at Andover High School going to Sunday. I know that is a big competition coming up. And there's also a robotics competition at the high school on Sunday. We'll start off with sports first, and then we'll get into the fundraising stuff. Yeah, so, boys' basketball lost Andover, it was a really tough game. A lot of high school kids showed support at Andover Gym, but it was a tough loss. My hockey team actually beat Andover a couple of days after that, five to two, which was a big win. We're getting back on track with our record, so we're gonna try and make it to the tournament.
Even the score a little bit?
Yeah, even the score a little bit. It was a good feeling, actually. A couple of basketball guys were talking a little trash to us for not having the best record, but we beat Andover, so it was good. The, both track teams, both boys and girls, won states. I think I talked about that a little bit last week also. And at school the other day, we actually had a march. All the track people and the coaches walked down Main Street, and everyone lined up along Main Street of the high school, and everyone clapped for them. We did the same thing last year with the wrestling team. For girls' basketball, they beat Stonem yesterday, and there will be a fundraiser going on. My statistics teacher, Mrs. Flanagan, she runs National Honor Society, she's the leader of it. And I heard a rumor, because she was talking to me and the head of our student section, Andrew Severin, about a fundraiser coming up. I don't really know much details about it. All I know is she's trying to get everyone to wear pink or yellow. It's for cancer and all the benefits from the game will go towards that. I know there was a girl with brain cancer, one of our past athletes at the high school. I don't have much information about that, so I'm sorry, but that was just the rumor. The girls' hockey team are also doing very good. They lost to Andover unfortunately, too, but they will be doing a breast cancer night called Pink in the Rink. There is a Haverhill teacher that they are supporting because it is the HPNA hockey team. The girls' hockey team, it's Havel, Penntucket, North Andover, all mixed together. So it's a retired Haverhill teacher, Lynn Lynch. She beat breast cancer and is currently battling mesotheliemia right now, and all the benefits will be going to National General Cancer Research, so that was another good fundraiser that I heard about. Oh, and the girls' basketball fundraiser that I should have brought up first, it will actually be going on tomorrow. There is a booster fundraiser, it's North Andover Booster Fundraiser, so anyone in the booster program for North Andover will be able to meet with the varsity girls after the game, get their autographs, take pictures. So it's a fun way to get them with the sport, and there will also be a halftime knockout competition, and if you wear your jersey, you're getting free, so. And, I mean, I think that's all of it. Halftime knockout, so knockout's a game that a bunch of kids actually made up, I don't know how many years ago. It's just a fun game, like, there's a line of people, you shoot it, the person behind you shoots it in before you get it in, and you get knocked out. So, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah. And, other than that, school's going great, there's no problems. That I've heard of. Yeah? Thank you.
Thanks again, Nick. So we're now gonna move on to the consent agenda and the, we have approval of minutes from January 8th and January 15th meetings.
Mr. Chair, move to approve as presented in the packet, the minutes of January 8th and January 15th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
No, looks good.
Anything on any of these?
Nope.
All right, all in favor of approving the consent, or the, I'm sorry, the minutes as presented in the packet, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? No, any abstentions or noes? Any noes? No. Okay, bottom to nothing. All right, we will move down to the Chair's Report. I feel like it's been not enough time since our last meeting, which would be the cycle that we're on for the next couple of days. So my, I don't really have a report, other than I'm glad to see Dr. Hutcheson back and feeling better. And I know, Ms. Limpert, you attended the CREST meeting and wanted to give the committee an update on that.
Yes, thanks. The CREST Board of Directors, once a month, we had our monthly meeting on Wednesday. Just two quick things I wanted to post you on. They just released their annual report, nice looking document. I'm gonna try to get copies for all of you, because it has good explanations of all the programs in here. It's kind of really more of an educational document than really an annual report. I think it's, they've done a really nice job here, and I think it'll be good for everyone to be able to look and see what the benefits are of belonging to this collaborative and what they can do for us. So that's really a good thing. The other thing, just to let you all know, is they're still in the process of trying to finalize their rates for the next fiscal year, which they haven't done and should be doing shortly. Typically speaking, rates have been going up about 2% per fiscal year, so we would expect our rates from them to be going up by that now. We'll have to ask Mr. Mealy what it's 2% of. What do we pay to the collaborative?
It's based on each student, but 2% is annually what we increase.
Currently, are we, how many students do we have in the collaborative currently?
I'd have to look. Yeah. Then Leanne might know.
Is there any change to that base? Didn't one of the schools leave that this past?
It didn't really change, because they weren't participating, that was why they left. They had no students in the, taking advantage of the services of the collaboratives, that's why they left, basically, so. And now there are schools that are trying to get into the collaborative, because they found out it's a pretty good deal. As you all may know, you know, a few years ago, CREST and GLAC was having some management problems, and they brought in new, sort of a whole new management team. And that team is just doing fantastically, just great. And so they're now two and a half years in, and things are really starting to pick up. They're seeing some really pretty significant growth in people sending students to the programs, because the programs have gotten very stable, everything's going really well. And they're trying to expand their services that they offer, so that's been good. And they've been trying to balance the facilities that they use and everything that they're doing, so they've really been doing an excellent job. I wasn't involved or didn't really pay that much attention previously when they were having management problems, but all I did was read a little bit of what was going on in the paper and a lot of finger pointing and stuff. But now, they're just doing an outstanding job. The management team running the collaborative is just first rate, so they're doing a really wonderful, wonderful job there, so. And you can see, you'll be able to see that when I get you copies of the annual reports, see how well they've been doing, so it's really outstanding.
Thank you.
That's all.
Dr. Hutcheson?
I was over at Kittredge today, and it's very striking when you walk in the door. It's only there temporarily, I believe, but another one of the buddy benches is now at Kittredge now, and I know they're gonna have some presentations, connected presentations. So it's nice to be able to see that spreading across the district. It's a really high-quality bench, and it looks great, and it connects the message of raise, plus the message of the initiative behind the middlenesses, so it looks great. Since I was over there too, I visited community programs, and it's also great to hear that. Beginning of March, we will have Kid Stop now at all schools K to eight. Kittredge will be, is the last school, so we won't be busing the students. Currently, we bus the students from Kittredge to Atkinson for Kid Stop, so. And Rick is reporting that Kid Stop enrollment's up to about over 500 students a day. Kid Stop's the after-school program. It's pretty impressive the way that has grown, so it's, that's great to see. Just to let the committee know that although you did sign, you did approve me to sign the contract for the Cambridge Institute, based on some of the information that was brought forth last week, we're investigating that further, looking a little more in detail on that before we sign off on anything, so. And then I'd like Mr. Mealy to report out on some work with the Finance Committee.
Yeah, well, we are doing our budget deliberations. The FinCom has started theirs. They are, as you would imagine, behind us. We did our capital improvement project approval, and they're working on that now. So last night, the town manager, Steve Foster, and myself spoke to them about the projects that were requested about a month or so ago. And answered their questions, there weren't a lot of questions, talked about the possibility of when the current facilities master plan is concluded, having a second one of those, and possibly including in those any work that needs to get done at the schools. We're in pretty good shape as far as our facilities go, but aesthetically, there are certainly improvements that could be made, so they could be part of that. And once they approve the capital request, then they'll move on to budget, and we'll have completed the operating budget part of ours, and we'll have to go present to them with the town manager. So that's where it is right now.
All right, we will move into old business, continued discussion of the fiscal '16 budget. So I don't know, Mr. Mealy, if you have anything you want to present up first, or?
Yeah, it probably makes sense to talk about what's been discussed so far and what kind of information's available. The way it works is, as questions are asked, and so far, questions came up during our meeting last time, requests for information, questions have been submitted by school committee members, and we've responded to a lot of those. And so, we'll present that information back to the school committee, and we'll do some of that tonight. And then, once it's been vetted by you guys, we can post it to the website, so that individuals can see what questions have been asked and what the responses are. So I'm just gonna kind of walk through what has been asked so far and what's available, and if you guys are okay with that information, then we'll post it online. So, you got this spreadsheet, and it included, the request was made to show the annual percentages from each year, so FY '11 to '12, and then '12 to '13, and so on. What I want people to keep in mind in this is, when we do these historical columns, we're showing the actuals until we get to the current year and the coming year. So, especially in the last few years, where we have had to compensate for large special education deficits or unanticipated expenses, and have had to draw out of a lot of other lines, what's going to happen is the actuals are gonna look very low compared to what we had originally budgeted, because we drew money out of them. We didn't get to spend the money for the intended purpose. But we're still gonna budget optimistically in those line items, we did for FY '15, and we will for '16. And if the stabilization fund is approved, then we probably will get to spend out of those line items, instead of having to move the money for something else. So, just something to keep in mind.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Yep.
So the increase in fiscal year '14 and '15 of 5.77, is that mostly driven off of kindergarten?
That's exactly what that one is. So when you look at the total, where it was 3.5% and then 5.77%,
Yep.
That is completely because $680,000 was added after the approval of the budget to make up for the kindergarten.
Okay.
Okay, so another one that came up was the discussion about lease or buy. And basically, this is just for discussion purposes. It's kind of a philosophical question that you can be on one side or the other, and in all honesty, with interest rates so low, it's hard to argue one way or the other. I mean, you could do either one, and it doesn't change things all that much. There are some benefits and drawbacks to each. What I did for this purpose is you can put any amount in. If we buy IMAX, which are about $1,000 a unit, then you could see that it's gonna cost you about $9,000 or more, $1,000 more to purchase those, to lease those than to purchase annually. But the benefit is you get those upfront, you get them for, you know, the first three years, as opposed to a third of them each year, which is what happens when you purchase. So it might cost you a little more, but you get them for longer. And then I started listing some items. This is not a comprehensive list of benefits or drawbacks, but just as an example, the additional cost of leasing. It does, the thing with leasing is, when you get them all in one year, they usually go, you know, their end of life comes around the same time, so now you're dealing with a large number of units, instead of it being divided out over the years. Benefits of buying, it costs less, more flexibility to change. The other part, and this is kind of, we've talked about this, I was talking on Mike Grant earlier, it's kind of a double-edged sword, in that purchasing gives you the flexibility that I'm not forced to make that payment for three years. You know, if something comes up drastic, you have the ability to say, okay, we're gonna put that purchase off a year and use those funds for something else that's needed. Now, that's a drawback as well, because it's too easy sometimes to say, oh, we're gonna put that purchase off, and it keeps getting put off, whereas if you've already committed, you're gonna figure out a way, some other way, to do it. So, like I said, we could do either one. We're still kind of working on how many units we need, and the fact that we're might, we're probably moving to Chromebooks instead of Macs, which are a quarter to a third of the price, so we get a lot more, so we'll figure out which one makes the most sense when we go.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yep.
So, I mean, let's say next year, we were to lease, and we were to come in with 300 computers.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's great that we have them, but what I have seen way too often is, we've got them and we're not using them. So, my question is, can we support, from a teacher professional development side of the house, having 300 new computers put in in our elementary schools? And does that make the most sense?
And that is absolutely the most critical question to answer, and Mike and I, we talked about that as well. Basically, the question is, if we do it each year, we're going to get probably seven carts of 30 computers. And that would be, you know, it would be distributed among the five elementary schools, and it would probably be, in that scenario, one to each of the three smaller schools and two to the larger elementary schools. And you could do that for three years in a row. So my question was, if we were going to lease, we would get 20 to 21 carts right away. Could we put them into service? Do we have that capability? And Mike assures me that that's not that difficult, that we could do that easily over the summer. And then, two, would they get used? And so if we can answer that question, that they will be used, then it might, it probably makes sense to go ahead and lease and get them there and going. So that would equate to three new carts in each of the smaller schools, and four to five in the larger elementary schools.
I could maybe do an example, maybe from the middle school, about we were able to do that lease, and then how much is it actually being used, et cetera, so.
All of you wanna sit up, they need the microphones, you need the microphones.
Or shout.
Well, the folks at home can't hear you.
I asked Joan to join me apparently, because at the middle school, she's had the experience of having Chromebooks in the classroom with the kids using it. And I visited the classroom on Tuesday, and was exposed and experiencing the kids using it, and they're just clamoring for more. I mean, you could probably attest to the fact that the teachers are asking for more Chromebooks, because I think they have, we have a schedule set up for them to use the labs, the rolling carts, and some of them are scheduled out through June. So they're scheduling every day, they're not sitting there unused.
I think actually comparatively, what I've seen is a significant growth in the middle school in the lens of technology and instruction, is that with the Chromebooks, it's quick, it's easy, there's not a battery issue, there's not cords all over the place like our netbooks. We always had standing jokes, but really weren't that funny. Fire hazard, and a lot of plugs and stuff, and that's all gone. And I think with the support of Mike and his ITech team, the teachers have learned very quickly how to access Google, apply it in the classroom. Google Classroom, that I know that he's already reported out on, is all in use. Any teacher who can get their hands on access for a Chromebook is now moving into the Google Classroom. And the kids now, I actually have a group of kids who are, met with me right before the holidays, wanting to know why we can't have more Chromebooks, because it's so great, and they are engaged, and I went, okay, you're on, and we'll be coming back to hear more from you. So it's really grown fast, and I think it's the use of the Chromebooks, and teachers would prefer that over textbooks. They look at it as a very, very engaging resource for kids and a research tool for them.
If we were, Mike, if we went all in on the 600 Chromebooks, would some of those go to the middle and high schools?
At this point, we were looking at primarily focusing on the elementary school and making sure that they have what they need. But it's, I mean, the middle school's looking, we're looking at getting more for the middle school. The high school, we were looking at, we just, it's such a large school, that it would be very difficult to purchase enough to cover what we need. So we're looking at the BYOD model at the high school, where students would bring their own device, whether it's a Chromebook, a MacBook, a PC, a tablet. The network is capable of sustaining that, so students, we could look at piloting a BYOD at the high school, and even possibly at the middle school, to see how that works at those levels. So the pilot would be probably focused on, like, eighth grade at the middle school and ninth grade at the high school, and working with those two grade levels to see if it can be expanded to all the grade levels at the middle and high school.
Jim, I think your model is good, and when you reduce the unit costs down to 330 from 1,000, there's a big difference in whether we lease or buy. So I think if the Chromebook is our solution, and we think that's the right device that fits into our curriculum and our infrastructure, I think we might wanna, you know, rethink whether we do it all as a purchase or go the route. The downside is, if they're $200 next year, and we bought them at three, because they're a, you know, a commodity at this point, would we have done ourselves a disservice? But I think that the demand in the schools is too great to have to, you know, try to day trade that commodity.
Right.
Mike, would you say that, you know, going into the Google sphere and all of that has really reduced the need for a lot of PD we would have had to provide using some other platform or some other device?
Well, the kids, with the Chromebooks, the kids have very, there's a very little learning curve for the students, because it's browser-based, they're used to it, they've been on Chrome or Safari or whatever. So their learning curve is very low, and it's the same reason the teachers is also pretty low, as far as the Chromebooks. So as far as the PD, there's not a lot of PD as far as using the Chromebooks, but I think the PD would come, would be better spent with applications and finding resources that the teachers would be able to use. And the teachers were looking at finding ways to share resources with the teachers, so that they, if one teacher has a great lesson plan, they can post it and share it with other team members within their team, and share those resources very quickly. And Google has a lot of capability in doing that with Google Plus, which is similar to like Pinterest. And Mary and Kara and I were talking this afternoon about using that as a way to share resources. So teachers are on Pinterest a lot, and they can post things. Google Plus is very similar, so we could leverage that resource and quickly disseminate information among the staff. So there's a lot of possibilities with the Google ecosystem.
It seems to me that, you know, at least for me, I speak for myself, that my model is sort of stuck maybe in about a five or 10-year-old view of how the world works, and that really probably doesn't apply at all anymore. We, you know, have to sort of rethink all of that, because, you know, we used to have a lot of PD, and even how to use the device, and how to get on the network, and logging on, and storing your stuff. Don't have to do that anymore, so.
So I think it's certainly exciting. It's nice to have the students, having the technology part of their school, doing their curriculum work. In terms of the elementary, what would the plan be, whether we leased and got a huge number of computers, or we bought them? In terms of training for the elementary school teachers, and looking at how to best use that technology to integrate with what students are doing in those different grade levels?
I would probably, the training would require, wouldn't be that in-depth, it would just be showing the teachers how to use the Chromebooks. But again, it's all browser-based, and it's really just using the applications and getting those out to the teachers, and making sure that they're aware of what the capabilities are. So there's not a lot of PD, it's more information, because the laptops are very simple to operate, and, I mean, your teachers would be...
I guess what I'm wondering is, I completely agree with you, I think that the Google platform is easy to use. I think what I'm wondering more about is, like, an integration specialist to work with teachers, to really think about how to use that as a tool, particularly with, I think maybe fourth and fifth grade, it's a little bit easier to see, maybe even third grade, but I just talked about second grade, first grade, kindergarten, of how to use that tool, and I just wonder, too, is, you know, is the Chromebook the best tool for K1, 2, if we're looking at using it those grade levels? Just in terms of hand size and being able to manipulate a laptop versus like a tablet or something else?
Right. And you're right, kindergarten, first and second grade, Chromebook may not be the best, but for the upper grades, it would be a great solution.
Okay.
And the instructional technology specialists, which you were kind of referring to, is a gap in our staffing.
Yeah.
We don't have any right now, and state recommends, state recommends for the size of our staff to have two to three instructional technology specialists to help with that integration. So they're balancing all of the costs, trying to get the devices into the students' hands, but then also having somebody on there, on staff, to be able to show the teachers how to use that, is another component to this whole puzzle that needs to be put in place.
How much are computers integrated into curriculum right now, consistently?
It depends on the course, it depends on, like, at the middle school, I...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but if there's one elementary curriculum, how well is the use of computers integrated into that curriculum today?
You may be asking the wrong guy.
I mean, that's... That's not, that's a question for.
Well, it depends on what we have for actually working computers in each of the elementary schools. So, you know, oftentimes you can find, and we have the elementary principals here, have different grade levels using them, particularly around writing, sometimes around research or presentation. But there's certainly room to grow because it's, it's probably fair to say that each school probably has one good working set at this point for an entire school to sign up for of, you know, of a cart system. Some of them might have two at the bigger schools, which really is the same. It equates to like one at the smaller schools. So, it's.
So, is it fair to assume that if Chromebooks fell from the sky today, we would still need to do some curriculum development?
Well, it's, it's not so much about the curriculum development, it's about the integration people that help integrate technology, help integrate the curriculum into the technology. And I think that, you know, the first step, and Mike's done a nice job, is we've coordinated pretty extensively to have PD last spring around Google apps for all the elementary teachers on an ongoing basis. They signed up for different, in somewhere at the beginning level, somewhere this. And then we did some more training again this summer prior to the start of school. So, that was really the first step, getting them used to be able to use that. But then the next step, as I said, Mike says is a piece of the puzzle. Well, I think Mike had a good analogy. First, we built this great highway, but we had no cars that were on it.
Yeah.
You know, we'd stand, turn the dial up downtown and we had a lot of speed. And now, we're starting to put the cars, which would be the computers. And then the next step is, okay, well, we have to have some directions for the cars to move. And that's, that's really what we're talking about, an integrated technology facilitator that would help do that. Some of the early adopters and we have some teachers that are excellent at it, but it's certainly an area of PD that eventually would be really good for teachers who aren't completely up to speed on that.
What you tend to see is when people are writing units, and I think Mike provided this handout, there's some examples from the middle school, is when, once you know you have access to the equipment, to the devices, okay, now, how am I going to integrate these devices with my, with different units? And that's typically, that's a typical approach with curriculum. You go step by step. How might I integrate it for this particular unit? I think you're seeing some examples here from the middle school that people are saying, okay, now we have access, how do I now integrate the use of that technology into this unit? And definitely, we would benefit by the technology integration specialists. But besides that, you're already seeing things happen at the middle school without the specialist. And it's really, and I'm sorry, it simply comes down to, how much money do we have to be able to put into it? And I think Mike's approach is, let's get to devices first because we're seeing some results from getting more devices with the teachers really integrating. Now, imagine if we could afford integration specialists, how even more devices could have a much stronger impact on the integration.
And what I hear from a lot of teachers is, as they're going through in planning a lesson, they're online looking for information. And a lot of the information that they're getting online is technology-related. So, they're, a lot of their, what they're saying to me is, if I only had computers in my classroom, I would be able to do this, this, and this. One example, I was on Tuesday, the software that they're using is capable of taking a particular article and rewriting that article for grade level, reading levels. So, they would take that same article and change the words and the wording slightly so that it's at a particular, at a different reading level so that when students are reading it, they're comprehending what they're reading and they're able to answer the same questions and write a response and write a summary of what they've read, which would have been impossible without the technology that they, that they were using. So, there's just, when I was a kid, I had asked my parents for a computer and the first thing they said is, what are you going to do with it? I had no clue.
It looked cool.
But then, there was really not much you could do with the computer. So, today, it's an equally difficult answer, a question to answer because there's no one, like, there are millions of possibilities that you can use these computers. And teachers are finding those and they're looking and they're, they're, they're ready to start using them. And not only the app, but there's a productivity piece to it. You know, I think when I met with Joan's English team, she had one teacher in particular. So, the kids were working on the essay in live time. She said, you know, she could go on and check out work as they were doing it, but then she'd say, who needs help? Now, she's sitting at the back of her desk in the room. I think she used the words, who wants me to creep on their paper? I think she came before us one day and live, she's in the back of the room making comments and she's not getting up, you know, not that she doesn't get up, but, you know, so there's also a productivity piece to it. But I do think that particularly the early adopters and then the middleing group of teachers, they're pretty resourceful in saying, in sharing this information, oh, I did this. And, you know, we're starting to see more websites that we've created in literacy where there's all resources on one site at the elementary for literacy. And now, we're talking about like a Pinterest or a Google Plus site where you put this stuff and it's, that's really about sharing those lessons.
What I'm struggling with, I'm sorry, is when we made the wireless infrastructure in the high school and the other schools, we didn't do that without increasing the bandwidth. Those are kind of linked. You know, having a wireless but nothing to get out of the building with didn't, didn't really make sense. So, they really, in my mind at least, were linked. And I think just putting computing devices, putting cars on the road without giving keys to the cars and a map of where we gotta go, I'm just concerned that we're going to get this, you know, evolutionary approach rather than this is where we think the applications make sense. These are the areas by grade level that we need, these types of devices. And as a result, are we getting Yaris's when we really need something at a different level for first and kindergarten and second?
I do think, though, that this is the only approach that seems to be working in this field is sort of the organic approach. This is not something that, that really works well with government planning. We're going to lay all this out, we're going to have standards, we're going to link computer software to the standard, buy blah, blah, blah. Doesn't work, it just does not work. And so, what we can do here, since we've now provided this wonderful infrastructure with no cars, right, is give teachers cars. And I would, I would say, I would respectfully submit that if we find cars are parked and not being used, we say, I know people who will use that car if you don't want it. If you don't want that cart in your school, no problem, I've got some schools that would love to have that cart. So, you know, I think we can allocate that resource where people will use it effectively. And I think we can rely on the, really, the sort of the whole philosophical view on how our teachers work together collaboratively to apply just to now this, technology, right? I mean, that's what we've been, the theme that's been going now since Dr. Edson's been here is collaboration. This is just another form of that. And Mr. Grant is providing the technological foundation for people to do that collaboration. So, I don't know, why won't that work?
I totally see what you're saying. And I think the organic growth of putting the computers into the hands of teachers and students to see what they can do with it, I think, is a great part of the puzzle. But I think just like in a language arts curriculum or math curriculum or socialist curriculum, science, whatever, you want to know each year, we're going to do lots of wonderful things, but by the end of the year, we want to get to point X. We want to make sure all of our students get here and we're going to accomplish these things. And you might teach it through looking at, you know, the Amazon River and I might teach it through looking at, you know, the desert, wherever. But we're all going to get to the common goals. And I think that's what I would like to see with the technology, particularly in the younger grades where they're really building the fundamental skills of, yeah, they can pick up their parents' phone or iPad and tool around with different apps and so on. But what are we doing to build them each year to give them the skills that they need so that by the time they get to fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh grade, they really have those fundamental skills to be able to use it as a productive learning tool as opposed to just something that's fun to play with? And I think that's what would make me feel more comfortable with, I'm all for technology and integration and providing these tools for the students, for the teachers. But I just want to know that at the end of the day, we can say to our kindergarten, first grade, second grade, all the way to 12th grade, you know, that we can say, by the end of the year, we really want to focus on this. And so, if a teacher says, well, I know this year, I need to help my students work on saving documents and being able to type, then that's going to be a part of my computer time. But I think if you just say to teachers, you're teaching third grade, here you go, do what you should do, I just, I think it's sort of an unfair, and I'm sure that's not the intention either at all. But I just want to make sure that everyone's on board. I think teachers are on board, schools are on board, everyone knows the expectations. And for parents too, so that we at home can say, oh, so I know this year, you're working on Google Docs or being able to search on the web in kid-friendly environments or whatever it might be. I just, I think that type of plan would just make me feel more comfortable. And I'm sure it's being developed or is developed, but just knowing that would be helpful.
That was part of, in my tech plan, was the digital literacy curriculum for K through 5.
Okay.
So, having, having spelled out what is expected of a K kindergarten student in using a computer and what is, what is expected of a first grader, second grader, third grader. And by the time they're through fifth grade, what is their, what do their skills look like for using, using the, whatever device we happen to have? So, I think that's important because as they move into the middle school, we want to make sure that all students, K through 5, all the elementary schools have the same skill set moving to the middle school so that they can take, take it from there and move them even further. So, that's part of, part of the plan.
But, and I certainly agree with him, Mr. Warren, but I think, it sounds like to me what you're talking about is curriculum, not technology. You're wanting the curriculum to be well-aligned, well-organized, and have everybody getting to the same endpoint at the same time, right?
It doesn't, it doesn't mean that you can't, teachers are going to do all sorts of wonderful things that are unique in their own classrooms.
Right, well, right.
But I want to know what, you know, at the end of the day.
Well, but that's, but that's a curriculum question. I mean, and this is the technology guy, we're asking the wrong people maybe about the curriculum.
Well, I think it's a coordinated effort.
Oh, I understand. But, but to me, this is like, this is like, you know, if I went into each, in each teacher's classroom in the old days, everybody would have had a whole different set of stuff they probably used to teach whatever they taught, right? Was that right or wrong? Should they all have had exactly the same stuff?
No. I completely agree they shouldn't.
I don't think so. So, you know, we're giving teachers just the digital version of that and letting them do that. And even better, coordinate that stuff or share that stuff with others. So, we're getting a much better deal than we would have gotten 30 years ago because they might not have been sharing, right? They would have just kept it in their classroom and used it. This way, maybe they'll even share it and other people can get, other teachers can get the benefit of it horizontally and vertically. So, I, I don't know, this seems like a, a great opportunity here. And, and I think to Mr. Millie's point, while I, there's some minor economical issues here about that, I think that let's just jumpstart this thing in a big way with a lease and get started and see what happens, right?
And part of the thought process, it might surprise people to, to see where we are with regards to technology. A few years ago, we were way behind in all four parts of technology, that being infrastructure, internet capacity, computers, and staffing. We had an influx of funds from federal, you know, ARAMoney and SFF money, but that was one-time funding and it, there's no way to sustain that. That was kind of our mantra last year, sustainability. It's not like we've forgotten that. We've positioned ourselves pretty well with regards to technology. Infrastructure and internet capacity are in good shape and we have the funding and the capital plan going forward to maintain it. This, if we do, as Mike and I have discussed, do the lease and get all of those units for the elementary school and then work towards the bringing your own device at the high school, we're in pretty good shape with regards to computers at each level. We still need to supplement them some. And then, as they're getting used, these are not going into every classroom, these are carts at the elementary school that teachers who want to do something with them are going to and are going to be able to see whether or not that's effective and can pass it on. Because that's what we really struggle with is, if we have them, what are we going to do? Well, we can't really do anything until we have them. So, let's use them and see how effective they really are. But we also have now in our operating budget, the ability to sustain the units that we have. And that's a great thing. So, now, all that's left is, you know, we've talked about these positions that would be helpful, is the staffing. And then, once we can deal with that, we'll be in very good shape technology-wise.
So, I'm just curious, I mean, I, I would love to see 300 computers go into our elementaries or carts. I'm wondering if year one, and I'm just kind of hypothetically thinking, what if we took like, let's say 150, right? And then, we took the money that we would spend on the other 150 and put in somebody in terms of integration specialist to assist with that as, as trying to grow. I don't want to see computers, and I'm not necessarily saying that they're going to go in and that they're just going to sit there. But if we started with a smaller number of 150 or 200 and then the following year in a lease, we picked up another, then we're, we're even staggering where our technology is a little bit. Still operating under a lease premise, but now, maybe we've got the support.
The challenge to that is the cost of an individual's somewhere between $50,000 and $60,000, which is just about, I mean, we've got $73,000 to work with that was going to get us those units. So, that would leave us with, you know, $15,000 or so, which isn't going to get us much in that way.
I think there's a couple of good points brought up is that, you know, A, getting the devices in. And then, B, you know, Zara had a really good point about, okay, well, what would a digital literacy curriculum look like, which Mike talked about? And we've spent a lot of time talking about it. Those are those specific technology skills that they'd learn. They might be changing rapidly depending on how technology changes, which it keeps changing or gets cheaper. But at the same time, that's one component. And I think we're mixing the two, you know? That's one component. What are the skills we want kids to have around technology by the end of kindergarten, first grade, second grade? But then also, how do we integrate it into the curriculum with the teachers? And I think that by having more devices allows the teachers to do the wonderful things that they're already doing and the opportunity to grow that, or I think as Stan said, organically. So, I kind of see this, two things together.
And what I imagine happening, Mr. McDavid, is I see sort of a, like, demand-driven budgeting. I think a year from now, we're going to be sitting here and we will have seen all kinds of examples of now why we need, you know, integration technology people, but we'll have some basis for making that, that statement rather than sort of hypothetically. Well, it seems like we need people to help them get it, but we don't know what that means. A year from now, we'll know exactly what that means because we will have all kinds of examples of, I could have done this if I just would have known a few more things or we could have gotten it distributed more widely. You know, I think this is a wonderful and relatively inexpensive way for us to bootstrap. And $75,000 is nothing compared to what we've spent on other stuff. You know, as Mr. Millie has said in other contexts, we've already spent a million dollars on the infrastructure. So, $75,000 is chump change compared to that. You know, it's, it's a great opportunity for us to really get going here. And, you know, I'd hate to see the, all the good work that we've done with the infrastructure and the bandwidth that we've created. You know, we have, we have first-class infrastructure, we have first-class bandwidth. We're ready to go. We just need the devices. And I think we're going to be pleasantly surprised when we see what teachers do with these devices. I don't think anything's going to be sitting around going unused personally.
Yeah, it makes, makes sense. Lease purchase is what concerns me. I mean, I think if we do 300 purchase, the lease is going to cost us 30 units a year if we go with a smaller end or the lower-end unit. So, I really would look to the team to say, these are the devices we need. And based on the price of those devices at grade level, we make a decision of lease or buy.
And I, I like Mr. Millie's kind of take on that, which is, with a lease, you're kind of all-in, right? With the buy, you're kind of like hedging your bets all the time, right? You know, next year, you may, well, let's not do 100,000 this year, let's do 50. We don't, we need the money for something else.
Get buy with.
Yeah, 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 maybe that, I don't know, that didn't, you know, blah, blah, blah. I sort of like the all-in approach to this and let's just go with it, right? Let's see what we can do.
I can recall many years sitting here. Well, we can't do it this year. The next year, the same thing over again.
Can't do it next year.
We fell way behind.
Yeah, and that was, that was when we were looking at pure purchase, where we were talking about, you know, four, 500,000, you know, big numbers to buy expensive devices in those days, so.
The other, the other component is poten, the PACH testing, which could be coming up or any other state standardized testing, which will most likely be electronic and we would need to be prepared and ready for that as well.
Would this give us enough devices to be able to handle?
Oh, yeah. If we did the lease where we had purchased.
Got enough devices.
We'd have plenty of devices.
Yeah.
And whether it's PACH or M-CAS, eventually, if M-CAS did stay, which I'm not sure it will, that's going to, eventually, that test will go electronic as well.
In terms of the tech budget too, I know you had a question earlier about the assistive technology. Would that have, would this have any impact on?
Well, assistive technology is, a Chromebook could be assistive tech, a tablet could be assistive technology. There's no specific line item because it's, it's a hard thing to identify when, when a particular student needs something very specific. So, Leanne and I work closely together to try to identify what devices are needed for specific students.
together to try to identify what devices are needed for specific students. If we did have more Chromebooks, we'd have that many more assistive technology devices that are in each of the elementary schools that are, that teachers would be able to use and leverage with those students. So there's no specific line item, but by getting those into the elementary school, it would.
Isn't that also IEP-driven? I mean.
Yes.
Some IPs are written in with the need for, the requirement for assistive.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Another tab is, the request was made to make notes of the larger variances or the bigger changes from FY15 to FY16. What I did on this one is, because we have to change, usually for reporting purposes, to the state accounts from one year to the next, the version that I gave you of our existing budget wasn't comparing like FY15, FY16, if some of those accounts changed. So this version that I've given you is apples to apples, last year's line item to this year's line item. So it kind of evened out most of the variances and really highlights what we have been talking about, which is that we are doing level services. Any increases you see are due to contractual salary increases, steps in columns, things like that. Here's a small item, the $4,000 we had for superintendent search. That's been completed, so we don't need that. And then we talked about the ESCO savings, the utility decreases, so those are in there. The reading you'll see is in there. And there aren't a lot of big changes. Addition of the monitors, that was, you know, and the other notes you'll see are the items that are the additional, the green on that list. So the monitors at the high school, the educational materials, I think, Ms. Warren, you asked about that particular line where it says textbooks. You asked about the existing 35, 178. That's what had been at the high school for their annual purchases. And this is just additional purchases of science textbooks, social studies textbooks, and some wellness equipment. So that's where it's reflected. And then you'll see the reduction in the utility costs, the elimination of office lease. And like I said, this will be, and we did decrease custodial overtime because that's been tracking down over the last few years. So those are the notes that show what the differences are. And like I said, that'll be available online as well.
I think some of the questions that I had were more about the 14 actuals. And I get actuals versus budget, but in some cases, there were pretty big jumps between.
They're going to be, yeah. Yeah. I mean, if you look at a line item for school allocation of material of $10,000, and we had to take 8,000, that's going to be, it's going to look like we only had 2,000 in that line item, and we're asking for 10. That's a huge increase, but really, it's just adding back in the 8,000 that we took the previous year. So that's most of those. Out-of-district cost avoidance.
Sergeant, before you leave that.
Yep.
I know you showed the reduction, the additional salary as a result of migrating from the fellows to a real position.
Mm-hmm.
Where did the fellows get paid out of last year? Because I don't see a reduction in any of the other lines to offset that.
I think it's salaries other in program.
It was, it was within the same category, it's just a different line.
Okay, thank you.
Is that where it is though? If you look, if you break it out by programs for elementary, is it the salaries other?
So the fellows were 85,000.
Correct, right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So if you look at cost avoidance, you wanted an estimate of what that has resulted in. And looking at the five programs, including the Knight Academy, believe it or not, there are students who attend our Knight Academy that if we didn't have that in place, would be out-of-district students. So we've got the TOP program, which has nine students in it, costing us right now $97,000, a cost avoidance of $470. The elementary language-based program costs us $85,000. We have five students that would be out-of-district if we didn't have it. The autism program at the middle school and the high school, low numbers right now, but like we had said, we need to have those in place so that parents have confidence in those programs for when their students, right, reach that level. And then the Knight Academy, as I just said. So overall, these programs are costing us $338,000 servicing 23 students. And using the average cost of out-of-district tuition, which is $63,000, $64,000, $65,000, we're actually avoiding about $1.2 million in out-of-district tuition.
Plus transportation as well.
Plus transportation, which 23 students, the average cost per student is about $20,000. So you're looking at another $460,000.
So do we have capacity in these programs for more?
Well, you've seen, we've got a request to maintain the TOP program because that has increased. I wouldn't say that there's additional capacity there. There certainly is, Leanne can speak more, but, you know, the autism programs, I would think so. Knight Academy, there certainly is. And then Leanne could speak to the elementary language-based program.
Hey, we'll catch that later, I guess.
Yep.
Thanks.
Will we talk about other opportunities to do more of this?
We're always looking at them, and, you know, Leanne can address if there are any on our radar. Then the other things that are included, and not necessarily specific to the budget, but just to give you a quick explanation on what we're doing with enrollment. And we're trying to get better at projecting our enrollment. So if you look at this, I'll do this as quickly as I can. We've got actual numbers since this '93-'94 school year. And you can track a particular class just by following the color and see how many students stayed with us or increased from one year to the next. So we do that. And then you can look at the transitions. And I highlighted the big transitions, which for us are in most school districts, are kindergarten to first grade, fifth grade to sixth grade, elementary to middle school, and then middle school to high school, eight to nine. And then you can see that those are the biggest numbers. But the other years do have some surprisingly big numbers in them from one year to the next. And then what I did is I took that average, and you can see the biggest one being the high school, middle school to high school, averaged a decrease of 50.3. So then we use that to create projections. And based on that 21-year average, you can make some projections just by plugging in those averages and moving that class up, either, you know, adding 2.6 from the first to the second grade, and so on. And you can see in that scenario that we would start to see a decrease in overall enrollment. But what they recommend is that you don't use that big an average, that you use the last five years. And so I've done that. And you can see that actually, we're pretty level over the next five years to what we're at, or at least that's what's being projected. The most difficult part, and the one that I'm still struggling with, is getting a good kindergarten number. It's the hardest thing to do. I've gotten all the data on birth. Birth do you no good, to try to figure out how many of those kids are going to end up in kindergarten. Even the census data isn't accurate enough to give you a true number. So we're working on, and what I ended up doing, and I found this out, it's the same exact thing that NESDEC does, when they, they take an average and then they run that average for your projecting years. So we're going to work on, try to fine-tune a better way to determine, to project that kindergarten number. But what has proven very accurate in projection models is using that five-year average of transition from one grade to the next has been very accurate. So once we fine-tune that, I'll be very confident in our projection models.
So it's really just a starting point that's kind of the.
The kindergarten.
Open loop right there.
Exactly.
Yeah, I see. Now, what is that? Can you go back up to the other, the bigger transition?
The, this or the other?
The other one, the.
The actual moment.
Yeah, yeah, that one. It's odd that you see those kinds of numbers, the fluctuation in the nine to, eight to nine. People, are students going to high school? You know, some years, not so much. 13, right? Minus 13. Other years, minus 76. You know, it's like.
Yeah. Yeah, it's surprising.
Yeah, it is interesting.
Do we know what accounts that?
Private schools.
Oh, yeah. But why from year to year? There's a huge swings there.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I would like to hazard a guess, but I'm not even sure why. We did think that during 11 and 12, you can see it was 13 and 22, that the economy was having an impact on how many students were going to private schools. And then, you know, now that it's picking up again, maybe it's a reflection of that as well.
We, I actually, I have specific anecdotal evidence that some students came back from private school, and then once the economy picked up, they went back to private school. Went to the high school for a while and they went back.
You can see some of that in 11 as well, the past couple of years, where we, you know, we lost 22 and then picked up 24 in their sophomore year. You know, we lost 76 and had a growth of 17.
When more went, more came back.
Right.
Yeah, yep.
When we opened, if you even go back, we were talking today, you open the new school, you see a lot less coming back in 2004, and then the economy's not so good, you see more.
The other question that always comes up is the impact of developments. And it's not as much, most people who do these projection models suggest you don't need to account for them unless you've got a huge development going in that is lower-income housing, because the factor is so low. And it depends on how many bedrooms the units are going to have. For instance, they're talking about 1,600 doing units. Now, if those units are higher-end units and they're only one bedroom, you're not going to get a lot of school-aged children in units like that. I don't know what they're putting in, just just an example. So it all depends on, you know, what type of units are going in. And you have a factor that you can use, and it's extremely low. I know when they were building Stevens Crossing, is that the name of it? People were anticipating a huge influx of students, and the factor was like a .2 or whatever it was per unit. And it proved to be pretty accurate, but it didn't seem like it was going to be the case. I mean, you're assuming two or three kids for every unit, and it just doesn't pan out. So it's something that you have to keep an eye on, but you really don't have to account for it. All right, and the last one that I have, I just added today, had to do with turnover savings. I will say on this one, the average has been, I think we had talked about 165, 170, but given this past year, which was lower than that at 135, you know, that brought the average down. So we're at just about 160,000 a year. And I see that trend continuing. I do anticipate this year being lower again than even the 135. We've had, right now, I know of three teachers who have announced their retirement. Now, there will be others that come forward, either resignations or non-renewals, things like that. But non-renewals don't normally result in a high turnover savings because they're not, you know, long-term teachers. So I would anticipate it being probably low hundreds for this year.
But you've never budgeted this number anyway.
We don't, we don't. So that's the information that was requested. And then the other one I thought we would look at are the questions. And that's where, and a lot of them are how I responded, if I didn't answer the question, it was, we would discuss it tonight, and these guys can certainly step in where that's appropriate. So utility savings, this question came up. Is it certain? What's it based on? It's based on the AMRESCO contract, the guarantees that are in the contract, and they have a payment they have to make if we don't meet them. Transition to performance-based budgeting, curriculum and data-driven decision-making. Hutch, who do you think should address this one?
That's a hard one to actually answer at this point in time because we talked about this a little last week. It's something we're going to be working on with the consultant we're working with on February 3. Because our budget, we're only halfway through. So to say whether the results from this year are actually a little bit hard to say at this point in time. A lot of times, if we, if something was totally disastrous, you'd see it. And therefore, we'd be addressing it in the budget rather than saying, well, let's just, we feel anecdotally, we made some changes in curriculum that were budget-neutral. Yet, we have a lot of anecdotal stories regarding about the impact of how we, the changes that we made. Yet, what we're working on in February with the consultant is when we, and again, we talked about last week, transitioning into the strategic plan driving the budget. I feel that we do, but they're out of sync right now as far as reporting and measuring. So we're going to be working with her to say, okay, now, based on our initiatives this year, connecting to the budget, what's the best way to report out of measurements halfway through at the end and projecting forward? So we're working on it. It's a work in progress. But also, we're half a year into performance-based budgeting. Although we talked about it last year, we're only into a half a year of actually trying to do it, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, the next one, Joan is here. It's one of our green, you know, items listed in green. It's a new teacher for the sixth grade. So Joan, if you could just, yep.
Before you get to that, though, can I just, I wanted to go back to the fundamental question, which is, so in my mind, when I start looking at the budget, and particularly the narrative, I'm thinking, okay, our goal, our ultimate goal is to get, is to be a level-one district. If we're a level-one district, we need to have seven level-one schools. And so I go back and I look at each school and I see gaps, right? And the gaps are pretty much exclusively high-need students, right? So I would, I would then assume in this budget, somewhere I would see specific performance-based information, which would say, here's where I'm going to put the money to close those gaps to get to level one. And if it's in there, I didn't.
It's hard to find.
Yeah, I didn't find it that easily. So as we go through this, that's what I'm looking for. That's the performance-based, you know, it's like, we've got gaps, and they vary by school, you know, some have larger gaps than others. So there should be some overall view on, here's how we're, here's how we're going to make our investment to close the gaps. And there also might be some differentiation even by school, you know, elementary school.
And I think that's a great point. But I also think, based on what we talked about in the school improvement plans.
Yep.
When that was the focus, and has been the focus, it's not necessarily a budgetary item. Because when you look at it, above and beyond level services, we have $300,000. Try to figure out what's the best way to use that. We are looking specifically more this year at some class-size adjustment, some special education and technology, all, you know, for $300,000. So it's more about really the organization of the school, how you, how you focus your professional development. And that's not part of, that's not in the budget. We don't, so I think, that's why, see, the strategic plan gives direction for school improvement plans. School improvement plans specifically were built around, how do you address improvement in the high-needs areas with what you have right now? And I think as you work into next year, you have to be able to say, okay, now, based on what you learned from there, what type of decisions will you make in the budget regarding that? It's, it's not just all about money. It's about, it's a lot about organizations, a lot about how you're paying your attention to professional development, as well as your data team meetings, as well as the way you may be organizing intervention within your school.
I understand that completely. I guess, however, having said that, what I'd like to see is, in some document, you know, this document would, you know, preamble to this document would be, you know, a discussion of that and a discussion of how that's going to be happening without spending money. I mean, I get that.
And that's why, that's why we do the school improvement plans.
Well, yeah, but, you know, but, you know, we want people to, we want the people who look at our budget to say, aren't you overlooking what you're doing? And somewhere near, there should be some small discussion of, we're addressing the requirement, it's just not necessarily a money-driven thing.
No, understood. But I also think I'd like to build off of that insofar as, you know, this was the first year we had, we built in the school improvement plans, addressing the high-needs areas. As we see the results of that next fall.
Absolutely.
You should be able to say, okay, based on the results of that, should we be devoting some funds in the development of next year, the following year's budget for specifically to address, where are we seeing some shortages that might be related to some budgetary impact?
And in this document, these would be, let's call them aspirational goals.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, it's not all worked out, but, you know, we, you're telling people, here's the direction in which we're heading. You know, we want to get to this point where we, where we have a need, we address it in the budget, and then we see how we did, right? Sort of that.
So, so I get that, but if we're, if we're trying to build performance-based budgeting and we need to be able to get to half-year, end-year, and next-year metrics, then we better start thinking about half-year, end-year, and next-year.
Correct.
Key performance indicators.
Correct.
Which means we should be looking this year.
Correct.
To establish what it is we're expecting the budget to drive next year. Because you're right, rat a cycle. And that should, I think, be driving to, what are we going to be getting readouts from towards the end of the year?
Right.
To say, hey, we did this process, this is the result we got. Next year, we're thinking about it this way. And here's how the budget-neutral approach is going to be able to get us moving forward. Or at least, if it doesn't, we'll know about it before the end of next year.
And to that point, you know, there's no, I mean, I have no expectation that we're going to take some of those gaps and close them in one year. We're not doing that. But you'd like to see some movement toward closure. I mean, you'd like to see some.
They shouldn't be widening.
Yeah, it shouldn't be widening. And you'd like to see it making some progress toward closure every single year. Anyway.
At this stage, Brian's absolutely right. The key is identifying the key indicators.
Right.
So you can monitor them.
Yeah. And start, and starting that process, monitoring them now, just getting in the habit, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Joan, sixth-grade teacher.
Welcome.
That was a great segue into why I prioritize a sixth-grade teacher. My, when I was asked to prioritize. My, when I was asked to prioritize budget needs for next year, I thought of three things. Level-one status, and then our district goals of increasing rigor through critical thinking and narrowing the achievement gap. So like I said, it was a great segue, Stan and Hutch, thank you. But, so basically, historically, there's been 14 teachers in the sixth grade, and I think you guys know this quantitative data already from the previous presentation. Fifth grade, there's been 15 or 16 coming in, depending on enrollment, and our seventh and eighth grade has 15. So when you break out all those numbers, sixth grade's always been one less. And we've typically, for a long time, have had two-person teams and for the social-emotional purpose of transitioning the kids up from fifth to sixth. Times have changed, and with the increased rigor of the DESE requirements coming down, as well as our own district's desire to reach level-one, obviously ours included, all the leadership team, and then obviously the increasing rigor, we started looking really hard a few years ago of how feasible it really is for the sixth-grade teachers to be able to look at student work, adjust their practice to challenge students, as well as offer them relearning opportunities to narrow that achievement gap, and it's becoming harder and harder. So we've been talking about the four, adding another teacher, as well as reorganizing to more four-person teams, which is part of this presentation. And so that's what I am proposing. Currently, we have one four-person team and five two-person teams, and we put the four-person team in a year and a half ago. And all feedback, hard evidence as well, it's been very successful. We've seen the ability to bring the two-person, the advantage of the two-person team benefits through those teachers' expertise to the four-person team, and that's the social-emotional side with the smaller teams, as well as increase their ability to collaborate on one subject versus two, and ideally, and eventually, improving their practice. So that is really the main reason for the priority of the sixth-grade teacher. And the way to answer your concerns about measuring success, I would predict that with, and then the organization piece, which I should probably clarify, is with the additional teacher, there would be three four-person teams. They would all be teaching one subject. And then the three-person team would be a math teacher, a science teacher, and an English-language arts teacher. And then they would all teach social studies. Why? It's not an MCAS. Right now, it's not our priority subject. It's important, don't misunderstand me, especially my social studies teachers are watching, but it is our reality. I think Hutch has done a great job over time of pointing that out, it's how we're judged. So right now, the, the plan would be is that the rest of the social studies teachers would be instrumental in designing that for those three teachers. Ideally, I would like 16 teachers in the sixth grade, but I don't think that would make the budget list, and that'd make an even four. But I know that's not really fiscally responsible right now in the other needs that we have within our $300,000. So I think one of the areas that I've watched over time is by adding this teacher, which I think is long overdue, it's really going to help us meet the needs of all of our learners, back to the opening point that Stan and Hutch were making about the narrowing the achievement gap as all, as well as increasing the rigor. So that's really pretty much it in a nutshell, I think. Last one, the DESE is, we know this, next-generation science, a lot of discussion about STEM nationwide is coming our way. And to ask these sixth-grade teachers to teach math and science, and with the upcoming changes that we're predicting over the next few years, few years, to implement that, it's not reasonable. And I, there's just not enough time in the day for them to pull that off effectively. So that is my priority request for the middle school.
So, quick question.
Sure.
I guess it's more for Hutch and Jim. We're seeing about a 62-student reduction, fourth and fifth grade, coming in next year. What's the impact in class size if we don't hire in, but reallocate the teachers that we do have?
Didn't it follow when you started saying reallocate the teachers, which teachers?
Right now, we have, it looks like there's a net reduction in fourth and fifth, if I'm reading this right, that we should, we should be enjoying.
Back in enrollment?
Yeah. So if the, what's the impact in class size if we just reallocate the current FTE count that we have to the middle school versus in, or am I reading this wrong?
It's not like you can take somebody from fifth grade and move them off, I mean, this.
Well, but, why not?
I think class.
It's occasioning a couple of things, typically.
That would be one thing. Well, besides that, but I mean, if we have.
That's the reason.
Or what you want to be able to maintain, and again, it's, it's more of, we've maintained 15 a year at all, at seventh and eighth grade, and nobody makes an issue about it. What we're trying to do is get a more reasonable level that equates with typically what occurs in the fifth grade at the sixth grade, so that you can have some consistency across. And when you have the consistency across, you're saying, you understand that the grade, the, the class size might vary a little bit, but understand, you add one teacher, you're only reducing a little over one class size. But so, you're not going to have that too, that variance too much, but you're going to lower it a little bit. But what you're saying is, we're putting in consistent teaching, teachers at that level to learn the curriculum well, to adapt the instruction according to the needs of the students well, and to be able to do it consistently at that level, so you're not just trying to patchwork it every year at the middle school level. And I think it's, as Joan said, she's been asking for this for eight years, for, you know, we usually ignore her. But, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding, but.
It out today, didn't we, Mr. Muley?
Well, I think it's, you know, with some of the positive adjustments that they made to curriculum last year, and I do believe they're positive, I said, well, you know, what we need to be able to tend to, and it's not as, it's just as much consistency in teaching and the teachers who are doing the teaching as it is about reducing class size a little bit. You're going to have the impact, not, not by reducing the class size as much as you will have to organize the teaching in the manner in which she, she is suggesting.
I don't dispute the need for the resource, but I need to hear from you and from the administration as we looked at reallocating the headcount to where we have holes and where we have challenges. And we need this additional headcount as opposed to reallocating the resources we have.
Mr. Gross, if I look at second grade, there's two teachers required to fill that gap. Wouldn't that be the reallocation of those?
I just want to be clear that that, that has been done, that we've looked across where the gaps are.
We do that within the elementary, we do that within the elementary.
So looking across schools, high school to middle, middle to high, high to elementary, elementary to middle, we don't do that?
We do, and the difficulty though is that we actually have to hold those because more often than, at this time of the year, it looks like the delta's going to be one extra teacher. But then when we get to registration, we find out, we need an additional classroom, we need to use that, that one.
Okay.
In some years, we don't, and it could be, you know, so instead, that could become a sixth-grade teacher and we now have $54,000 to do something else with.
Great, I want to make sure that we've done that, essentially, thank you.
Yep. Okay, any other questions for Joan? Next up is Carla. We did talk about the $24,000 in textbooks and wellness equipment. Carla's going to talk about the question regarding the Academic Development Center monitors and the .3 guidance.
Just so I know what we're talking about, the Academic Development Center used to be our faculty meeting room, is that right?
It's a place where you met once.
Yeah.
Once.
What, what's the part?
Once upon a time, yes, yes.
Okay, I got that part, okay. So that's, that's what we're talking about?
Yes. I actually would, I'm going to start with the .3 guidance and work the other way. I really, when I looked at the priorities for the high school, I really tried to look at how I could get sort of the most bang for my buck as far as support for students, with a focus on keeping our failure rate low as it is and keeping our dropout rate where it is, which is less than 1%, and doing our best to put the supports in place for our high-risk kids. So, the .3 guidance is, I have a .7 guidance counselor as one of our current counselors. And what that translates into as far as the weekly schedule for the person is every Tuesday, not, not there, and half a day on Fridays every other week. So, as our enrollment has grown over the last several years, in each counselor now, they divide the alphabet for all four grades relatively equally amongst them. And what ends up happening is, any student who builds a relationship with this counselor, this is their counselor for the whole four years during high school, may not have access to support of any kind on a Tuesday. And I say that, and there would always be another counselor who'd be more than willing to sit with the student, but sometimes they're not willing to sit with someone who's not privy to all of the things that have been shared before. There's a great deal of social-emotional work that is done by the guidance staff at the high school, along with our school adjustment counselor in managing when kids are having difficult times, either in classes or with other students, or in their families, what have you. So to not have someone available one day a week for a chunk of the population of the school is, is a big loss. And as we've gotten larger, it becomes a little bit more of a hole. The other piece of that is the college and career counseling, of course, and it's really important to have someone there full-time for that because things come up from colleges. We get calls all the time about transcripts not there, or faculty recommendations that only came partially through, or what have you. And that's the other big part of the guidance counselor at the high school's job, is to make sure the career and college counseling is done, meeting with the younger students, the ninth and 10th graders along the way to plan their four years out at North Andover High. So, the person is already in place, already is a .7, and was a full-time counselor many years ago when she asked to be .3, a .7, rather. And now, we need a full-time counselor back and she is ready to be full-time again. So I would really like to have her back as a full-time counselor. It benefits all of our students, particularly the ones that are assigned to her, and it will make it a better atmosphere when, when students are in guidance looking for their particular counselor to work with them. The, going back up the ladder here, the academic, oh, sure.
My recollection from a couple of years ago was, our student-to-counselor ratio was pretty high to begin with.
It is.
So.
It's above the recommended level and we've always worked okay with that. But it would be nice.
Right.
Because they do try to divide it equally, so it would be nice to have her there. Any other?
And it'll, it'll continue to be above the.
Yes, oh yeah, this isn't going to necessarily shrink it. It just, it just makes sure that services are there.
Bad problem, less bad.
Yeah.
Tough problem, less tougher.
Okay. So as far as the Academic Development Center goes, that is an area of the school that is used before school, after school. It's opened up on some Saturdays, it's opened up during vacations, it is used throughout the school day as long as our monitor is available, which would be during an empty block perhaps in the program that the person works in, to allow kids to take tests or quizzes during the school day. Generally, it's done before and after school, and teachers have gotten very comfortable with sending a test or a quiz or anything that needs to be monitored there because they know there's an adult there. I have paid for that out of a grant, and it's called the MCAS Support Grant. We've gotten it for, I'm sure North Andover got it before I was there. It's, it's an entitlement grant, and all high schools across the state, if they want it, are entitled to this money. It varies depending on how big your school is and what the state determines your need is. But what's happening is, we were warned a couple of years ago that as Park transitions in, or another testing system, if that doesn't survive, transitions in as a national testing program, the MCAS Support Grant may go away because it is specifically designed to support students who need help with some of the MCAS subjects. So I have used the money fairly creatively. Kids who are struggling with MCAS do go to the Academic Development Center for tutoring or get extra support there, or take parts of the test there, et cetera. But because it's open, we've been able to then schedule our students from the National Honor Society who are interested in tutoring in particular subject areas during that time as some of their community service. We've been able to have the ability to take tests and quizzes. We've been able to take our student assistance team recommendations, and before a student is recommended for special education, they might get assigned to the Academic Development Center for X amount of hours to try getting extra help, you know, through teachers, through supports like that. It's been very successful, particularly for our ninth graders. Our failure rate amongst our ninth graders each year, and I can produce some data to show you, Kelly Driscoll's been the one overseeing this for the last couple of years, and she keeps good track of how many students we service and what their grades were when they went in, and what their grades are when they finish. We don't have very many students, especially in the ninth grade, who fail more than one subject anymore, which is, you know, we're making some progress there against the failure rate, against our high-risk kids. They're seeing it as a place to get support. All our students are welcome there. Special education, ELL, regular ed, anyone who wants to go into the Academic Development Center to get support. It's also doubles as a writing center. Teachers in the English department were having students trained to help be writing tutors. We worked with Merrimack College to get it up and running, and I know a number of the English teachers do still use it as a writing lab because there are 24 computers in there also. So, to go back to my point of, the MCAS grant is going away. We got $6,000 less this year than last year. It's projected to be even lower for next year, and many, many communities across the state got no money in their MCAS Support Grants this year. And I'm just guessing, but my guess is, they didn't use it the full capacity or they never applied for it, so the state just took it away and, you know, shrunk it down, and then we all, I think most communities got less. If we utilized it, we got less. So I'm a little concerned that if I don't start to put this into my operating budget, I'll get to a place where the MCAS grant will be so small or nonexistent, I won't be able to help those students for MCAS, but also help all the other kids either. And so it's, it really is very cost-effective. It's less than 19 hours a week, it would be an hourly rate, but I do want to have some money identified in the budget to support that because it has been, it's, it's one of our first-tier interventions for our kids, and especially coming out of our student assistance team, it's very beneficial to be able to recommend students step in there first before going to any kind of special education testing or anything like that. We give it a try there to see if that helps. Sometimes all it is is organization, or just really focusing in on a particular subject and when they have a smaller environment and somebody who checks in with them. The monitor is excellent. She's one of our power professionals in the team program, and she does a great job. And the fact that she's willing to come in during vacations, we put credit recovery in there also. Our online program runs out of there, and she's very knowledgeable in our online program, is able to troubleshoot a lot when kids can't move to the next level of a program they're working on. So it, it really is well worth the amount of money that we've put into it to get the results that we're getting. Any questions on that?
Remember compelling presentation by Ms. Driscoll on the ADC, great work being done there.
I will say, this one's unusual in that normally you're looking for a trend up or down for your indicators. We know what they are, they're failure rate and dropout rate, but they're pretty low right now. But we recognize the pressure that the increased enrollment is putting on the high school, so this effort is to maintain a good level.
Yeah, you can tell them to say before the fact.
Exactly. So our, what we're looking at is to try to make sure it stays where it is and doesn't go down or up.
And then, I think you're already aware of the money I asked for in materials, above and beyond my various expenditures on textbooks, which are spread out through 10 departments. We have some areas where we are definitely seeing a growth in students and, as well as books are wearing out. And we do have some textbooks that are quite old, nine, early 90s. And we do have some textbooks that are quite old, nine, early 90s, so we need, and since they're in history, that's, there's a whole section of history missing from those books. But I do, I'm trying to address some of our needs with a reasonable amount of money, and also the wellness equipment in our fitness room, which is used all day, every day, before school, after school, during the vacations, during the summer. We have regular programs that run in there beyond the classroom. That equipment is as old as the building. So, it has been glued together, you know, put together as best it can. I don't want to say duct taped, because we wouldn't want any weights falling off on anyone, but they really, a lot of the cardio equipment in there needs to be updated, and we just need new equipment to replace the old. And I certainly can't do it all at once, but I'd like to start being able to upgrade and get rid of the things that are broken, or that really don't work so well, because they're really not helping kids keep healthy if they're not working at top, top precision there.
Can I go back to, two questions about textbooks. When you develop a new elective, is the cost of the books, if you need them, is part of that? How does that work?
Sometimes we are able to work with a distributor to give us a pilot set, because we say we're trying this course out. Sometimes if we're looking at something that might have more than one section, we just buy a class set. We've moved further and further away from actually relying on the textbooks for everything that they used to be relied on, because so much can be done electronically, and students have access to a lot. And we have a number of our programs that run on electronic textbooks. But I'm actually trying to just, we need to replace some of the biology books with new books. They literally can't be rebound anymore. And we are also looking at, I think we needed to purchase some chemistry books, because I think AP chemistry needs books, because the curriculum dictated to us has shifted. So that's a, the money for science textbooks is a varying amount of books. It's biology, chemistry. I may have to buy some physics, because we're not going to have those available as well-repaired as they used to be. I definitely need to be looking at social studies to see what we can use there, and then the wellness equipment.
Are those the books that you'll be buying, are they also available as eBooks?
They may be, and they may, sometimes what we've been fortunate, the biology books come with an electronic version and a license for that. So, we normally have, the kids have the license, and then we always have some requests for an actual textbook. So, most of our ninth graders who are in biology use the electronic version of the book, but you have to purchase some books in order to get the electronic. It's, that's kind of a strange arrangement.
Yeah, yeah.
Because usually you can buy the electronic version and have the license for five years, but they give you the electronic version with the purchase of the textbook, which has been good. It allowed, it allowed us, if you remember, one year we had ninth and 10th graders taking biology, we would have needed about 600 books. So we were able to have just the 300 with the 300 licenses, and get through that one year where we had two grades in biology as we shifted.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
All right. Next, couple of items are, question regarding the FCIs. I'm sure Greg?
Yeah, well, the facilitator's a collaborative inquiry, they're in place.
Can I just interrupt? I mean, I just want to kind of point out that there's a pretty lengthy list of things that we kind of need to cover, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we cover the questions that are out there, but also be a little respectful of time, too. I know everyone's got an early morning.
Let me then kill two birds with one stone. Yes, it's the same structure in place, and yes, we were able to use that hour early release and leverage our faculty meeting times across the district to get a two-hour block, elementary, so that we're able to, on those early release days, have quite a bit more time than just an hour. So yes, they do meet.
Then Hutch, did you want to deal with the reading literacy question?
If Mary wants to come forward, and Gillie can join in, we put together this two-pager, looks like that.
Yep.
It should have been, it was sent to you, I know that.
It came today.
Uh, today.
Yep.
And, reading, I don't want to say reading isn't in the budget, but we didn't ask for more money in the green area, the highest priorities. We have the tune of additional 150, we know we could have used well if we had more. This is, this chart up top is showing what's existing now between operating and Title One, you see operating, we had $300,000, and what it's paying for. The one piece I did talk about last week was the adjustment we would make next year with the continued use of $300,000 is, we wouldn't use the Merrimack Fellows, we wanted to fund that Merrimack Fellows, and we'd be using that amount of, we'd be using that money towards adding tutors. Because we're not getting the impact out of Merrimack Fellows that we thought we'd be getting on the tutorial side of things. So, that's the reason we want to change stuff. And Mary can walk through what she's been working very closely with, with the reading teachers and coaches of various levels.
So what we did is we differentiated the jobs, so that you can see exactly what teachers are doing. The two reading coaches, and it's very interesting, like, one is really good, K2, and the other's 3.5, so they bring that great mix. And they, there's a list, I don't know if you want me to go through them, if you want to look at it and you have any questions, but they've been doing an inordinate amount of work to basically attack tier-one teaching, so that it's classroom teaching, helping new teachers with the literacy block, developing a website, so grade 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, with resources, with videos, with teaching points. They're going to be teaching a in-service class based on best practices in literacy, so that it's going to be available three times this spring and the summer, for teachers to take, to help them with the best practice, with running records, with all the latest development. So again, affecting the elementary school teacher in how she's teaching, or he's teaching reading on a regular basis. And that is what their focus has been. They've also, one of the new pilot programs at the, we started it, is that we're taking an intervention program, which they've looked at, what is the criteria for it? They've looked at how to differentiate which children should be part of it, what they're going to use to run the pilot program, the different programs that are going to work and not going to work, so they're using those to evaluate. And that's going to be then what they're using for the courses to teach the teachers as well, so it's going into, in the next year, what the reading tutors would use to help the kids with the intervention when they are in the school system. Another thing that they're doing is we're identifying the kids before June this year that will need intervention for next year, and targeting those kids so that we can see where the tutors would best be fit, best go, and then using what we're trying for the intervention program to fit into that as well. So, they've been developing all of this, they've been part of the professional development days, the two-hour block days. They've been giving lessons on literacy to the entire K5 staff during those meetings. We've looked at, they brought in articles for the teachers to discuss. One article's about the Common Core in literacy, and what we need to do with the Common Core in literacy. They've brought in exact teaching videos on what to do with the literacy block, and they've had turn-in talks with the teachers on what they're seeing and how they can use it in their classrooms. They've done a whole thing on literacy language, so that K through 5, when we're talking, we're using the same speaking points, so that the kids are hearing the same thing throughout the district. So these are just some of the things that they've done, and they've just done an enormous amount of work. Another thing that we've asked the teachers to do is give us their best practices, their best assessments in literacy. And there's another website that Greg and Mike were talking about, that we're going to have for the teachers to put up their material, so that they can share it among themselves. And again, that's going to be through kind of a Pinterest, Google, Google site they're going to be using as well. And the next, February 11th is our next two-hour day, we're going to look at the rigor that we've been talking about for assessments that goes along with the Common Core, and looking at the assessments based on rigor, so that we can change assessments if we need to, so that they fit what's best for kids, and up that whole ante of rigor, which is one of the things that we're doing throughout the district as a focus. So, they've been working on that as well, a rubric for rigor to apply to the different subjects as well, and those are being used by K12, actually, throughout the district. So that's them. They've also gone into mult, a multitude of classrooms. They came with Kara and me, before Christmas, we went into over 60 classes and did lessons, combined lessons on reading. We did Bartholomew and the Ooblick, and we asked the kids questions about what they were doing, what they were reading, and then we had the science experiment based on Ooblick, where Kara talked about what's a solid, what's a liquid, what's the difference. So we tried to combine that to show that, you know, literacy is the basis of everything, and, you know, you can teach science, but you have to have the literacy first, and this is how it's combined, and how, you know, just again, model teaching. So they've been doing that as well. They meet, we have a literacy team that meets once a month, and we all get together and we discuss best practice and share what's going on throughout the district. They lead that, they lead those as well. That's pretty much a summary of them.
I think you've hit also along with the other folks that intervene with them. I think one thing to point out here in this piece is, the Title One, there's two schools with about 30% free reduced lunch, Thompson and Atkinson, and the middle school qualifies for a little bit of money, but not very much. So, that's additional support for Title One eligible students at those targeted assisted schools for additional time and support who are behind. And you see that we have 2.5s at the Atkinson in reading, 1.0 at the Thompson are reading, and then you see a tutor that works at the middle school as well, providing intervention. Two questions, if I could?
Just, so next year, if we don't have the fellows and we're getting the tutors, about how many tutors will be hired, do we know?
Well, tutors are relatively much cheaper. Typically, a tutor could work, you know, a 25-hour week for somewhere around $27,000, $28,000. And, you know, so with the money that we have, we'll have to look at the needs and then how we assign them. And that's why we're really trying to make the best impact we can, and see how it goes at the sergeant with that. But as Hutch keeps reiterating, the biggest bang for our buck in what Mary was talking a great deal about, what the reading coaches are doing, is how do we impact that tier-one, so that our classroom people on the front lines are doing the best they can with best practices around guided reading, et cetera, in the classroom, because that's where we're going to have the biggest impact. You'd need an army of interventionists to be able to intervene at all the different schools we have, so it really has to come down to need, and that's why it's so important this year to be able to identify, okay, what are the key criteria for those kids who are behind that we want to identify to hit the ground running as we go forward.
I've got a couple of quick questions. First, I applaud us for evaluating and changing direction from the fellows to something else. My question is, did we do a retro to find out why the fellows didn't work? Is that, was that a skills issue, supervision issue? What was the challenge there that didn't work?
To be honest, what we had anticipated, their ability to function, we, was not exactly how they were allowed to function as far as the new program regulations for their certification was concerned, and the hours they needed to be able to be in classrooms, working with the teacher and supporting the teacher, for sure, but not being the direct service with kids as far as on the tutor piece. So, we learned pretty quickly that, so we made some adjustments with them and with Merrimack itself, but to continue that relationship where we know now that they need to put in so much time with their own practice.
Yep.
And demonstration of their practice that is not directly servicing the kids in the same manner a tutor would. So, that's, that's the reason for that.
Do you have any risk?
Some takeover time versus inter-class time, or something?
Well, there's a component of takeover time, but, you know, I think the, I think the bottom line is, back to what Hutch said, is, you know, we're pretty fortunate, I think, in the past, and we haven't had tutors per se out of the operating budget, but we've had Title One tutors. And I think we've been lucky to be in a community with some retired teachers who are like super skilled, and we're lucky to have some teachers that are, you know, might have stayed home for four or five years and want to get back in the business, and that's a step in the door. And I think that you just don't, you know, you like to think when you see something on paper and it looks like it's going to work, and it's still working in a particular way, maybe not the way we envisioned. I think that there's the ability to get more bang for your buck by bringing in that type of person.
Do we still believe our DIBBL's data, based on how it was administered this year? What you, what your success was misadministered this year?
No, no, I'm just wondering if there were some challenges with the resources that were assigned that.
Yeah, no, the, the, the DIBBL's pretty straightforward, and the training and the different folks that did it, that's, that's not, that's not rocket science.
Okay.
Administering the DIBBL, so.
Good.
And we have terrific folks that have done it, so.
Okay. And the last question I have is, I think the army of people that we need, many of them are at home, and do we have any vision or any aspirations for family inclusion in the reading program, continuity across the summer, and whatnot, or is that, is that something we're still trying to work out?
Those are different, that is absolutely an aspect that we need to further develop, and I think, I mean, when we look at the amount of what we, when we look at it, and say, what do we think, well, the reading coaches have really had a significant impact on both looking at curriculum, looking at instruction. Now, what about if we have a little more focus on, how do we involve more of the community in this? There's a lot of possibilities there. We just haven't had the people power to be able to go after that and pursue it. So I think that's definitely an aspect, because that can really have a significant impact on, on a intervention piece, but you really need it well-coordinated.
And I think there's some good examples of that that's happened, particularly at Title One schools, because you've had dedicated Title One reading folks. I mean...
The literacy day at the Thompson.
Literacy day at the Thompson, I mean, you get 250 family members there, and there's a little mini lesson from Diane Peacock on the importance and how to read to your kids and what to let them do, and those things. And you've seen different celebrations, one book, one school, at different schools and things like that. I think when you can take those bests and those exemplars, and now that we have some boots in the ground with the reading coaches, and we've got Mary and myself working, working with the principals, I think when you find out what works best, then you'll be able to replicate some of those successful programs across all the elementaries.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Eric.
The handout was particularly good.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that was very helpful.
So, with respect to time.
Stop asking questions.
No, I can summarize fairly quickly. I mean, the intent is that those that do not currently have a response, we will add what's been discussed tonight to this sheet.
Okay.
If there's anything else you would like us to address, please let us know, but the intent is to get this posted sometime tomorrow, so that people can have a chance to look at it in the spreadsheets that have been provided in advance of the public hearing.
Right.
So, I think the only item we haven't touched upon with regards to the priority list of those that are in green, would be the elementary-level program in special education. We've talked about TOP, understand why we're adding to that, but if Leanne could come up and just talk about the elementary program, I think we would cover it all.
I want to thank Leanne, because she is recovering. She was homesick yesterday. Mary Lou, by the way, is our only leadership team member not to be here, is homesick tonight.
Hope she feels better.
Ma'am Spohler again?
No, don't start.
She is on the same campus, you could say.
So the reasoning for the elementary program is because we have a number of students that are out of district right now, that we would like to be able to build capacity to keep them in district. There's at least four that have gone out this year, with two additional possibilities. So, when you think of four to six students at $63,000 average per year, it's pretty significant cost savings if we're able to keep them in district. What we're finding, and you might have learned a little bit about this from Crest, is that they've developed some programs for younger children with social, emotional needs, and that is the greatest area of expansion right now. They started off with just a couple of kids, and now I think they have like eight classrooms. There's a lot of students, it's not just us, it's, you know, it's everywhere. There's this need for social, emotional programming for young children that we haven't seen before. And our TIP program is very successful with the kids that can be... And our TIP program is very successful with the kids that can be successfully included, but it is an inclusion model. So if students need to be self-contained for a greater part of the day, we don't have the facility to do that. We don't have a teacher to be down there all day long. That teacher that is currently in the TIP program is out and about in the building and supporting kids in the classrooms.
So that's the service that we're providing.
Right. So we would still keep the inclusion model, but we would add a self-contained model to serve those students that we've had send out.
I know, obviously, we're looking to kind of put programs in place that will, next year and years after, kind of just keep maintaining them so that we can keep the students in district and avoid out-of-district placements. Are there any other things that you see kind of coming up that next year are going to be the gotchas?
This is the biggest one that I'm seeing right now. I mean, we have pretty much, we have got programs at each level now for just about everything, with the addition of the autism program at the high school. We do have consistency of programming through the levels. So I feel like we're in a good place with that. This is the area that I see growing the most.
Okay. And as Leanne's pointed out, and she's done a great job, and she's only been in this job for a year and a half, two, two and a half?
Well, if you count the interns, three now.
Okay. Time flies, imagine that. Time flies. If we don't have programs in place, we are basically forced to send students out. We always, our firm belief is keep students in. However, once they go out, it's very difficult to bring students back. And so if you have all the programming in place across K to 12, what we're going to have is, over time, you should have less students out. Trends can go various ways, but if we now have well-established programs and defined programs, which Leanne's done a tremendous job doing across all levels, over time, you should see an even bigger impact, because we simply refined those programs, and we're not even thinking about going out. We're here, they're here.
Hutch, you kind of touched on my question. What would be the possibility of bringing some of these out-of-district students back in, and how does that process work? I know parents obviously fight hard for these out-of-district placements, and justifiably so. We all want the best for our kids. But as we ramp up these in-district programs, is it a yearly IEP meeting that you can suggest it, or?
Certainly yearly, but I have to say, the really young children, parents don't want their kids out of district. They're not the ones fighting for out-of-district placements. We did have one student who went out for a forty-five day, and we were able to bring him back. So I do see that we should be able to bring a couple back. You know, there's always the fear of being the guinea pigs of the new program. So you have to get it up and running and build faith that we have something that, you know, is good for their students, and then they're willing to come back. But you have to kind of get it rolling first. But I think the younger kids are the easiest ones to bring back. Most of their parents really want them in the district.
I know you're probably really stretched, but have you maybe started to identify or target some individual pupils that may be possible candidates to bring back in?
Yeah. I mean, I'm looking at, you know, of the, we only, we have four out right now and two other possibilities. But I mean, we could maintain the two possibilities if we had a program next year.
We do have another district coordinator that works very closely with Leanne on keeping her up to date with where different children are at different times and their meetings that are coming up.
And she's identified about three kids that could possibly come back that she, you know, has in other programs that are in a place where they could be serviced by us if we had something to offer.
Well, I just have, it's definitely not easy, and I don't have any job, but obviously it would save a lot of money if they were able to come in, and so.
Right.
We tell her that all the time.
My question is, Carlo, how have parents been accepting the programs that you've been putting in place over the last couple of years, whose students need these services? Have they been good with staying in district in general, or is there still?
I'd have to say our TAWP program is the most successful. I mean, we've got, the parents really want their kids to stay in district for that. But we've done well. I mean, the high school program is brand-new, so that, you know, so that's relatively new, but that will grow as well. But even just one student, where the cost of a new teacher is less than placing a student out. But, you know, we've got good numbers in all of our programs, so I would say, you know, we definitely are building capacity. I think parents are building their confidence.
The other question that comes up often is, do we look at the in-service, are the in-district services that we provide and the possibility of doing with an employee rather than contracting out? And we do. It gets close. It hasn't gotten to that point yet where it made sense, but a couple of those are getting close to where it would make sense for us to hire somebody rather than contract out.
My question was related to capacity. I mean, it looks like we have some very effective programs. Are we able to bring other students in from other districts into those programs? And, you know, for example, Knight Academy looks like a very successful program in particular. Can we offer this to others to bring additional opportunities?
That really doesn't come under me in special ed, the Scarlet Knight Academy, so I really couldn't answer that question.
With the other programs, autism or the?
We could certainly, you know, if there were a need from, at the middle or high school level, we could certainly tuition students in if that was a possibility. We've had questions about tuitioning kids into the TAWP program, but we just don't have the room for that right now.
Is that the physical room that we need, or is it human resources that are the challenge?
Everything. We would, you know, we need to grow that program. We need, you know, we have nine students in there already. We have the majority of students. Andover maybe has three or so. So it's, and there's only one teacher at this point, so if we start adding on, we need to look at another teacher, and we need to look at another van to get them in the community.
Well, in fact, isn't that what we have above the green line?
Yeah, right. So if that moves forward, we may be able to tuition some students into that program, and there has been some interest.
Okay, so there's demand if that is in place?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, like I said, yeah, if you have any other questions, you can email them to me. We've included the questions we've received so far. If you take a look at them and you feel like we need anything else, I'll send it to you before we post it tomorrow. And if you feel like we need to add anything, let me know.
Just one, we didn't touch on this. When you look at the summary sheet by what we would, last year called program areas, it appears as though the high school and the middle school are both getting a larger amount of money on a percentage basis than the elementary schools.
Yeah, once I did kind of apples-to-apples, it brought them all within four and a half or, you know, a little bit above or below, so that kind of evened it all out.
In the elementary school line, is there something that's not included in that, that if you, how did you?
Well, partly what happens is the fact that in the original one, you've got a district-wide, which all elementary could fall into, but it needed to be moved into the elementary to reflect that.
Okay, okay. That would make sense.
I just want to thank the leadership team for being here. They put in a lot of hours.
Yeah, thank you.
A lot of difficult, challenging discussions. There's always a lot of push and pull when you talk, because each one of the principals or directors advocates for their program or their school, yet they also, you know, we work really well together as a team for the district. So I want to thank them for coming all the distance and putting in the time tonight to be here, so.
They certainly seem to be setting a good collaboration example for the rest of the staff.
They're great collaborators.
Good collaborators.
Great collaborators.
We appreciate it. And I would say that this budget and the last budget are two of the most amazing budgets I've seen so far on the school committee in terms of collaborative agreement on trying to do the best for the district. So we certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
But if your questions now, the leadership team can answer them. They will necessarily be here Monday. I mean, we're welcoming them back, but.
All right, so I guess. Sorry. I guess the questions I have would be, just going by the program budgets, there's, in a number of places, there's equipment instructional, there's an equipment instructional line. Can you talk a bit about what that is? Because I know in some places it goes up quite a bit. Like at the middle school, I think it goes up from, like, I don't know, two thousand and fourteen to fourteen thousand this year and next year. Maybe just talk about what that is.
Yeah, and again, if you look at fourteen, it's, in a lot of places, it's going to go up a lot.
Yeah, but it was about two thousand all the years prior. I'm just wondering what it is.
Yeah, and are you looking at the middle school specifically?
Right now, I'm.
Yeah, Joan, you know, when Mike mentioned that at the middle school, they've been trying to address, especially CARTs and using the Google Chrome, that's exactly what you're seeing there, is she's using some of her school allocation money to do those purchases.
Okay, so you're saying the middle school is getting, they're getting additional money to buy technology?
Nope, nope. They're reallocating their allocation money. So other lines, I mean, the amount that the middle school, right, the amount the middle school has gotten over the last, since I've been here, is pretty much the same. They just spend it differently each year.
Prioritize what's most important.
That's great. And then I noticed also that there's library funds for the middle school and the high school, but there's none for the elementary level.
There are, it's just a matter of what line items, again, each school gets the same amount for the last five or six years, but they go in different line items. So it might start in, and it might even get spent out of library, but some schools might put it in materials, and other schools put it in library, and others put it in textbooks. So the way we look at it is, here's a per-student amount for each school, and it's going to be in those different lines, and then they're going to spend it as needed based on whatever the need is for that year. So it might be that some schools haven't spent anything for library in a couple of years, so it would reflect zero.
Let's just put somewhere else.
Um.
Where's the elementary school right there? Where's the elementary?
All elementary.
Got a question, will you go?
Yeah, please.
Jim, if you had any update on that special education stabilization fund we talked about briefly last week? I spoke to the town manager briefly last Friday morning. I don't know if anything's transpired this week as far as that goes.
Nothing has transpired. The town manager has not presented his budget yet. So we continue to have conversations. He actually let me know that he had spoken to you and did a better job of explaining it to you than I had. So that's all that's transpired. I mean, there's definitely the desire to make it happen. And like I said, the Board of Selectmen are very supportive of it, the town manager's very supportive of it. I would imagine the school committee will be. And I don't yet have the indication of where FinCom is, because they haven't heard it yet.
Do you, I assume that the town manager will be writing the, probably several Warren articles to try to establish the stabilization, but is that a true statement?
Correct.
As far as you know?
Right. And that hasn't happened yet.
So is that a collaborative process? Are you guys working together to draft a budget? Because it's, the mechanics of it are complicated, if you ask me. Do you guys work together on that? Or is he just taking the lead on it?
Yeah, there are certain things that we certainly work together on, and we work together well, but something like that, he would take the lead and draft it.
So would we know by our next-week vote if the FinCom has any concerns on that?
No. No, I.
No?
Wow.
Well, to that, to that.
Well, it's just the process.
I agree, the process, but I mean, we kind of got shut down in ESCO because there was concern over not fully understanding it. And I just would hate to see us in a half-a-million-dollar hole, because at town meeting, that confusion results in a no vote.
Where we are right now is, the town manager has proposed, based on our indication that this is a dire need, has proposed a solution. It has met with strong approval by the Board of Selectmen when presented to them. We certainly, administration certainly support it. I would be really surprised if FinCom had any concerns. But the process is that it, we move forward with our budget, and once we approve our budget, the town manager takes that and combines it with his and presents that to FinCom, and we go through the rest of the process. I don't know how else we could do it.
I think the concept would be embraced, but just the mechanics of it, I mean, if you refilling that with free cash every single year, FinCom's going to have some concerns about it.
Except that you have to do it through a town meeting vote.
Right. But I mean, they're making a recommendation to town meeting, and they're saying, you know, whether or not, the idea of having money available for these, you know, these high-need, unexpected costs is, everyone agrees with that, but how we pay for it is always, you know, the question, so.
Right.
Sorry.
Yep.
But to Mr. Gross's point, I mean, what you're suggesting is a half-a-million dollars less of general ed stuff. I mean, that's, simply put, you would decimate general ed if they didn't, if they didn't support it. So if that's what they're willing to say, if the finance committee is willing to not support this and say, just take it out of your budget, the general ed budget, that would be surprising.
The problem is they're not knowing until next May.
Well, I understand, but is it worth liaising with our FinCom representative to, again, socialize this, just to make sure that it's clear what we're going forward with, just so when it does come before FinCom, this doesn't become a misunderstanding or what's going on?
We have the opportunity to be there when presented to give our, you know, state our case.
Do you have a date on that? Sorry, I lost that.
Once I have it, I'll let you guys know.
I'm very curious.
Well, and the other thing too, in comparing this with ESCO, there's almost no complexity in this. It's mostly like, do you agree or not agree? Mr. Trissey's point, it's like, you know, with ESCO, there was all kinds of questions, like how are you going to get the payback, and who's the company, and why did you use them, and, you know, what's the guarantee like, and what happens if they don't, this and what, you know, this is, we're going to take free cash, which we have, we're going to set up a stabilization fund, and we're going to put it in it. Now, to Mr. Trissey's point, there are some other issues, like replenishing the fund year after year if we do use it. And also, I think a question would be, in that Warren article, to define the stabilization fund, how do we get the money out? Not just the vote at town meeting, but under what conditions, what do we have to show, how does it work, blah, blah, blah.
And given we're budgeting nothing in the general, in the ops budget for it, that's, I think, going to be.
If it's not going to pass, we have some serious.
But even if it does pass, I mean, the logistics of being able to recoup what we need, it's not like we, you know, had an unexpected overspend of a budget item that we have. It's like, we're no longer budgeting for it.
Right, right.
So that kind of sounds like, you know, we're going down the street naked and hope someone brings a robe. That doesn't feel very comfortable.
But that all depends, Brian, I guess.
All right, I've got one last question, and then just one final point. In the program breakouts, the curriculum professional development, can you maybe just talk a bit about, real quick, for salaries, professional, it goes down pretty dramatically from fourteen to fifteen and then sixteen, as well as training and education, it goes up. So I'm assuming those are interrelated, and just wondering what the differences are.
Yeah, I'd have to look at, I can get back to you after I look at it.
Okay. And then the only one final thing I wanted to mention that I didn't mention during the technology is, I'm really excited about the new opportunities, I think, that the technology will be bringing to the schools. The only thing that I would want to encourage thought about, and I'm sure you have talked about it, but, is just to, I know that we have to sort of creatively think within the resources that we have. And so we have, I know currently a librarian, but if that can be morphed into a library-media-specialist position, that might be able to maybe better suit the direction that we're going in and thinking about using the technology as a resource, that maybe would be sort of a bit of a buffer where we don't have the full specialist that we want, but maybe sort of an in-between until we can get there. It's just an idea, so. Anyway, thank you, thank you, thank you.
And I just want to follow up to Mr. Gross's point. So, you know, we all read in the paper about the seven-hundred-and-sixty-five-million-dollar shortfall this year, right? So what is that, what might that mean to us, and what budget impact might that have if we have to suck up a bunch of money to fill some holes this year because, you know, what could be the potential impact of that?
I think what they're talking about is its impact on local aid and Chapter Seventy funding for next year.
No, I think that's the budget shortfall for FY-15, and the governor and the legislature have made a pretty rock-solid commitment not to touch, you know, local aid. I mean, they're, they're going to touch some other things, I mean, that won't impact North Inno as much, but the regional transportation's getting hit, and that affects some of the surrounding communities. That's not going to hit us, but there could be, there could be other things.
Yeah, in the past, it's been circuit breaker.
Circuit breaker and.
You know, circuit breakers taking big hits in the past, you know.
I'm familiar.
Yeah.
All right.
Any new business? There's nothing on the agenda but anything.
No, thank you.
No?
One request. Can we review executive session notes and see if we can get those released?
Yes.
Now that we've closed our negotiations.
Okay, yep. Any public comments?
Definitely public.
Funny, we actually have public.
Very exhausting, public early, early morning.
It can be resident, it can be, it can be public, yeah. Self-serving public.
Yeah. Any comments from the committee?
Let me just reiterate the statement that was made earlier. Robotics competition, Sunday, high school, be there. Big, good time will be had by all. Forty teams from all over coming. It'll be fun. It's basically a 10 to 5 kind of event, and you can come anytime and just observe a little bit. You don't have to stay all day unless you're glutton for punishment. But it'll be a lot of fun, and it's, you know, a great event. It's, you know, like our musical events or our, you know, theatrical events. So, I would encourage everybody to come, stop by at least, and see what it's all about. And encourage younger students to want to do this when they get to high school. It's a good advertising pitch.
Mrs. Warren?
Yep, I wanted to thank the Sergeant PTO for putting on a wonderful winter carnival, and also to all the volunteers from the youth center, the middle school, and the high school who came and supported that, and just were wonderful role models and, and certainly were a huge help to the process. So, thank you.
All right. And again, I just want to thank the leadership team for being here tonight and all your collaborative efforts.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, and seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We adjourn.